Have you heard Mr. Ryan?
He snuck in on me like a ninja.
Alrighty, folks. We'll call this work session of Plowman County Board Supervisors to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by a momentous.
Uh, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so option number five is the county pays a, a, a very close percentage to, as the county pays the same percentage and, and it makes, um, HSA contributions for all employees that are on a high deductible health plan. All the same. So again, it, it, it's, it's a nominal change from some of the others. The total cost is a hundred and three thousand. And what we have in the budget right now is ninety-two thousand. So it would be eleven thousand acres. So. You know, we talked about county pays all, employees pay, pay all, and then there's some options in between there. So part of the budget today, we kind of need to determine from a insurance standpoint to, you know, what, what plan or what option the board wants to go with it. If we can do it now or we can do it later. Mr. O'Brien had talked about, um, looking at some additional programs and he talked about the one thousand, um, the one thousand deductible last time. And after speaking with Donna Snow, we've actually, and, and, and I just don't, what Mr. O'Brien was, was, was asking for at the time, I don't think we have the time to implement something like that. Um, and because we have to notify Anthem by April first, is that correct, Donna?
Yes.
April first, what options we want to go with for a renewal. Um, so how we want to move forward, what are the plans we want to go with. Um, and then we would send them our rates and, and, and our contribution. So, so again, the board is, is adopting the budget today. And, you know, that's going to include some type of health insurance piece. Um, I, I guess worst case scenario, the board could always, if they didn't want to do it today, um, they could do it at a work session next week. But that's, that's, that's kind of a further discussion.
I think, I think the one that we talked about last time is option three, because I see you put eighteen thousand in.
I did. So let me go, let me go to option.
That is just keeping the percentages the same.
So option three is keeping all these percentages the same. The only, the only thing that I, I'm not a fan about option three is last year because we're, we're, we were switching employees from, you know, a single plan to the anthem plan. We had to make some adjustments to try and make, to more or less make individuals full. So, so some of the HSA contributions are a little different all over the page. So you can see here for, for an employee only plan, we made it eighty dollars. For a dual plan, we made thirty-five dollars. And for a family plan, we made it ninety-five dollars. So under option five, it's, it's similar to this, but then it makes all of those HSA amounts the exact same amount for any employee that's on the high deductible plan.
Alright, then what is, what, do you have one of these charts?
Yeah. So option five is this one right here. So. Again, so here, so here are the monthly increases for employees. Uh, this is single only. This is a dual plan. And these are individuals on a family plan. You know, the, the big thing that we're going to have to look at over the years, and, and it's not something we can take a big bite of necessarily this year. But we really had to make some adjustments to the family plan last year, um, just to try and, uh, hold harmless employees coming over from, from employee children. And so employee children coming to the family plan, they have, you know, they had an increase. And then those that were already on the family plan had a significant decrease. Um. So there's, there's a set where we're paying a little bit more than we're paying for others on the plan. So at some point, you know, kind of what Mr. O'Brien was talking about, you know, we may want to try and level some of this out. So again, so option, let me just kind of.
So most of your savings would be the leveling out of the.
So, what's that? It's a little bit of the HSA, but it's also a little bit, there's, you're paying a little bit more of a consistent amount for the employee only. And then there is a slight increase on the families.
Okay, so the column on the right is the increase.
Correct. This column right here shows the monthly increase. So let me just show you the three plans really quick. That besides, you know, the, the county pays all or the county pays none. So again, option three, county pays the same percent, you know, roughly, you know, someone on a single plan, you know, would no less than twelve, you know, seventeen dollars. Someone on a dual plan pays no more a month than twenty-nine dollars. And someone on a family plan pays no more than seventy-one dollars. Now, someone on, on the seventy-one dollar plan, they could save significantly if they wanted to go down to a five hundred deductible plan also. Um, so that's, that's, that's a personal choice. Um, so that's, those are the rates for the option three. That's the county pays the same. And remember, that was a total cost of a hundred and ten. And over what we have in the budget now, that we would need to add eighteen thousand in there. And again, um, county pays the amount in the budget. This is a plan that, that was formulated to, to meet the amount that was in the budget right now. And again, under the employee only plan, you know, the employee only pays a little bit more. The highest they would pay is thirty-two. Under the dual plan, um, the highest someone would pay is thirty-four. And then under a family plan again, the highest someone would pay, the highest someone would pay, uh, seventy, seventy-one. I'm sorry. There we go. Sorry, fast, a fast higher change.
So are you, so you're recommending five?
I am, I, I, I would, I would recommend five. Um, it's similar to the county pays the same percentage. Um, it, it's kind of a combination between what's in the county budget and the county pays the same percentage. It's kind of a combination of those two. So again, the cost is a hundred and three thousand. We have ninety-two in the budget, so we would have to put another eleven thousand in the budget. But that's, 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 like I said, that's solely my record.
No, no, what we've got written in, we changed it from eighteen to eleven, so we gained seven thousand.
Correct. You know, do we have eighteen in there right now?
We already have eighteen written in.
Okay.
So then yes. So.
That should be. I do think everyone should pay something into it.
Well, I mean, not to be completely, yeah, it's not, but it's a good deal for anyone, because I'm on it too, so.
You're good with that?
Good.
Part of you saying you're doing the same thing for everybody, not, nobody's getting treated differently as far as the HSA goes.
No, like I said, we're keeping the HSA the same. We're trying to make the employee only plan that the same benefits there. And, you know, we're trying to somewhat make the same benefit for all those on the dual plan. The family plan's a little harder, you know, those that are on the five hundred last year. We had to really tweak that last year. So it's, you know, it's not exactly even, and, and we're going to have to work on that over time. But again, we're trying to somehow equalize all the plans a little bit. But, but I guess when you're looking at this in conjunction with a salary increase for whatever, whichever way the board goes.
That's, I've already done that math and made it to, you take somebody making forty thousand dollars, and if they're on the, well, if they're on one of the family plans, use the fifty-five dollars, you talk about percent, half, one half the percent of their salary going to insurance, so that, that we are giving back.
That's, that is what the board discussed, correct. So the worst case scenario on this is someone on a two fifty plan is eight hundred and fifty-two dollars a year. So depending upon where the salary is.
I would love people holding hearts. I know.
Everybody should share, everybody should share.
Uh, everybody should share a little bit. And what was it? Show me the numbers on option three again. I guess it, it would just be good to see the differences.
Yeah, and so, uh, so really, the employee only under option three is being held a little more harmless because, you know, we're trying to, in, in some organizations, you know, what you pay for your family or spouse, and some of them don't allow spousal plans and, and others. So we're trying to, we're trying to keep the employee held a little more harmless, even though there are slight increases. And we have a nominal increase for dual, and then there's, you know, there's an increase for family only. Looks that this is based upon the same percentage. So that was that. Um, and, and, and the only reason I don't necessarily like something on this plan, and this could be tweaked, you'd have to tweak it a little bit, is again, you have different eight, the county's paying different HSA levels for different individuals. And, and Mr. O'Brien, just to be quick and catch you up here, um, so one, we have to let Anthem know by April one, what we want to do as far as where the dual goes. Um, so, you know, they did provide us, um, they provided us rates for the one thousand, for the one thousand plan. Now they're not, they're not that, not that drastically, um, cheaper than the five hundred. The five hundred and the one thousand are pretty similar. Um, and so through Anthem, the local choice, we can have, Donna, what is it? We can have three plans. And if we have three plans, one of the plans has to be an HDHP. Or if we don't want to have an HDHP, we can only, we can only have two plans.
Yes.
Um, but, but depending on do what you're saying, you, you're talking about, you know, looking at the co-insurance and some of those components, just in the time that we have, we just, it's, it's, it's.
Maybe next time, right? That's what you were talking about, it says maybe next year. Uh, I, I personally would like to stay in option three. I guess, I, and Mr. Weaver, they are paying a portion. This is just, you know, seven thousand dollars difference.
We, we should pay.
Uh, I mean, and, uh, but I agree, if we stayed at option three, if you tweaked it to where you did the fifty dollars for each one, I don't know whether that would make it go up. It ain't gonna matter much.
It's gonna make it go down just a very, so if you went with, um, if you went with option three and I had to tweak all of the.
Did the same thing to it as you did five, where they're all fifty?
Yeah, it, it's honestly, it's probably going to be pretty close to this plan.
Pretty close to, oh, you mean pretty close to the option five plan?
It would probably be pretty close to the option five plan. I mean, I, I, I can tell you what the, what the biggest differences are here. So if you go to option three, you've got, like I said, in the single, you're going anywhere, someone's actually decreasing two dollars to someone's paying seventeen dollars. So if you go to five, that's one, someone's decreasing, well, the biggest is nineteen dollars, and someone's paying seventeen dollars. And this is trying to keep everyone under employee only the same. Um. Under option three, the lowest, someone's paying four dollars a month to someone's paying twenty-nine dollars a month. Option five, it's the same, the four dollars to twenty-nine. And then under the family plan, someone's paying from nine dollars.
Oh, that's four.
Oh, so sorry, yeah. So three, someone's paying from nine dollars a month up to seventy-one dollars a month. And someone's paying for nine dollars a month to seventy-one dollars.
You're actually, that bottom line, who you're paying seventy-one, what is a county pay at a maximum on that?
So the total premium on that for the two fifty deductible plan, the total premium is two thousand twenty-five a year.
What is?
Oh, I'm sorry, month, two thousand twenty-five a month.
Yeah, two thousand twenty.
And, and so the employee pays eight hundred eighty-five dollars with that plan.
I think it's.
And again, if someone's on the two fifty plan.
I, I, I'm just looking to the difference between, and I think the numbers are almost all the same except for like four of them. Then four of them change twenty bucks, I think.
Yeah, the five hundred is a little bit more, and, and there are some, some changes in the, the single plans.
What's the objective of trying to get the, the market goes into that, while saving the county to be the same across the board?
You know, just from a, from a, from an employee, um, kind of a, a, a level flat amount throughout the organization, from an administration piece, and from just, uh, you know, having the same for all employees for the HSA. You know, that was really kind of the, the thought process behind this.
What sort of the thing may also be to try to get people to move to that plan, to give them sort of provide savings?
Well, we can, we, we did, and that's where when you look at the, when you look at the premiums, I mean, if you look at what someone's paying for a family plan. So if you take the twelve sixty and the fifty dollars a month, you know, for what, what that benefit is, that totaled out to thirteen ten a month. So in each of these plans, if you look at, for instance, dual, uh, the county pays nine hundred and thirty dollars a month for that plan, and they're getting fifty dollars a month versus what the county is paying for these other tiers. So yes, we are trying to pay more for the HDHPs. Um. If, if, if you want to encourage folks to go to an HDHP. So yes, generated from the HDHP, we can pay a little bit more. The five hundred, we pay less. On the two fifty, the richest plan, we, we pay a little less on those. Now, but last year, that's not necessarily the case under the family stuff because of the, because of the switch we had to make. If you look here, you know, it's nine thirty, nine twenty-eight, eight-five, nine twenty-five, nine fifteen, eight eighty. Down here, it's, it's just, it's, it's a little different. It's due to what we had, due to the transition last year. So if, like I said, however the board wants to go, I, I think in, in the grand scheme of things, we're probably, I mean, again, if you go back to the, we go back to the first chart, uh, first. So between option three and option five, well, like I said, you're talking anywhere between, you know, right now we have eighteen thousand in, in budget that the board added. So we can either stay the same or, or we could decrease the budget a little bit. So like I said, we don't have to decide that right now unless the board wants to. Before the day is over, we're going to need to, we need to have something in the budget as we, as we, um, advertise a, a, a budget. Just to report the budget.
That sounds like, to me, option five is just less administrative work. So decrease.
Ms. Eager?
Oh, it's an option four.
That's a four-year.
And here on option three, we're talking about, right?
I was talking about. Yeah, so option four stays, stayed within the ninety-two thousand. That was in the budget originally.
And then that was two thousand.
And so what that did, that leveled out, um, the HSA, and every plan had an increase, including employee only, dual, and family plans.
I think you said that one, okay.
Yes. Three or four, so we, there's only a couple of differences.
I can do three or five. I mean, uh, three, I just, I won't take it for my employees. Or no, as much as possible. That's the only reason I say three. If you made things even, then it's pretty much a wash, doesn't matter.
Yeah, if, if I made the HSAs even, uh, three, you know, you kind of have to look at what the county pays into premium and HSA a little bit together on that, or, or, or you can just adjust it, um.
Is that what you're doing in five?
In five, he's making them all the same fifty.
Yes.
Whereas these are some ninety, some eighty-five.
So why not do five, rather than trying to adjust three and look at five? What's going to be different?
I'm sorry, is that you, Ms. Booker?
I mean, if, if we want to do fifty all the way down, that's what five does.
Yes.
So if you want to adjust three to fifty, then what will it do with three?
Uh, I can show you.
Yeah, I guess I'm actually more capable of treating five.
Okay, so let's, uh.
Maybe, it's flippable for one. They're, they're not that much of difference in either one.
You change, okay, so right now, it's, uh, it was one oh eight or one oh nine is, is the amount. The county pays the same percentage. So again, this is option three. If you just change each of these to fifty.
Can't believe I could see that.
So we just went, it, it, it basically went from one oh eight to one oh five.
So it went down, so it's four thousand dollars difference.
Yeah.
Into.
But we're paying eighteen. Where's the eighteen thousand? But still.
Then it would drop fifteen. You'd go eighteen to fifteen, if you did three. If you did five, it goes from eighteen to eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
Does it? Doesn't matter to you? But that's what we just did. If we change the math, that's fifty dollars for everything, it's, it's a difference of four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's reduced.
Well.
Well, three is four thousand dollars more than five.
And it just said, I like three.
Okay.
Yeah, actually. Ms. Booker, does it matter to you?
Doesn't matter.
So you got to pick one.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't seen the great difference.
So I'm debating between.
Nine will be three or five.
Like I said, it's just, it's a four thousand dollars difference.
Five would spell three. It could probably save three times, right?
Would, we'd be spending four thousand dollars more than five, but that's questionable, just because.
Yeah.
You could have somebody switch out.
You could. And like I said, some of these three thousand dollars, that, that, that's the thing. You could, you know, you could have someone that, well, let, let's give a good example here. Let's, so someone is, so if someone's on a two fifty plan right now, what's it saying? They're paying eight fourteen a month. Well, they're going to go to eight eighty-five. Well, that same employee could say, you know what, instead of going to eight eighty-five, I can drop to the five hundred plan and pay five oh five a month. Well, the downfall to that is, is because of last year, we actually paid more for that employee for that plan.
You can find out what kind of scenarios.
There's, there's going to be lots of fluctuations. So, so really, a, a four to five thousand dollars.
Yeah, eighty-two million dollars, that's not even a benefit.
No.
I'm not going to throw away money.
Well, it's not, it's, this is a what-if scenario. It's not going to be the final cost. So the final cost is probably going to vary by four to eight thousand dollars plus.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, for instance, last year, I'll, I'll give you a prime example. Last year, we were supposed to save close to twenty-one percent on the health insurance plan, based upon what current premiums. You know, and once everyone selected all the plans, maybe some people decided, you know, hey, this, this family plan's richer, so I'm going to, you know, move all my family off a different plan and go to here. Well, based upon the premiums from the previous year, we ended up saving, it was about fourteen percent is what's projected. So, you know, there is about a six percent fluctuation in that.
The asset insurance was cheaper than the other. Well, when we took the bids out, oh, far more.
Yeah, yeah.
And how many thousands about?
It was forty percent.
It was over three hundred, it was over three hundred, three hundred some time.
Yeah, it was, it was a big difference.
Yeah. So I mean, let, yeah, I mean, you know, to me, it's what type of structure do you want? What, what makes sense from a structure standpoint? And then, you know, those, not that three or five thousand dollars is not important, but that's, you, you have one person that could change from, from a single plan to a family plan, and that's going to probably eat it up right there. So.
Not for this time around, but it seems to me that the high deductible plan should be more directed towards getting people moving to and more savings for the county. You know, we're talking about a hundred dollars differential. It's not even that, because you add the ninety-five dollars, no difference to the cabinet, it's just.
Yeah.
So that's a characteristic to really have a.
Um, and, and that's where, I mean, so for instance, on, on option five, that's where, well, for option five, we tried to make it more advantageous for someone to be on there. I mean, so for here, under, you know, employee only plan, you know, we're, we're paying five ninety-five for both of these plans, and we're basically paying five eighty, just because it's a cheaper plan. Um, but if you look at the dual plan, in what we're paying for the HDHP, nine hundred and thirty dollars, plus we're paying fifty dollars towards their HSA, that's nine hundred and eighty dollars. So that is a benefit for someone to go to a high deductible plan, because their, their monthly costs are to people relatively low. So, so for this, we, we, we tried to tier it, so there is a better benefit to go to a high deductible plan.
Okay, are we starting at three?
I, I said three. I think you're set. We could debate this thing all night. Alright, we got two fives, two threes.
I'm good with the three.
Okay. Fine.
So that's fifteen thousand.
Yes, ma'am. But, but we gained three, because we already had eighteen written in.
Yeah, you wanted to, and you wanted to level off the HSAs, is that what you said?
That's, well, we said.
We're a hundred, we're a hundred percent.
It's just a river.
I think if it helps you, Ms. Eager, is that level it up a little?
Okay. So that's. So we have the option.
Consider eighteen thousand.
Yes.
Be fifteen thousand.
So we got to get, yeah, so we can decrease the health insurance by, by three dollars.
So people change plans and screw the work up.
Yeah.
I don't think we changed that as a captain position.
No. Um, so Liz, you want to, you want to? Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll get you to.
I've got the, the data, so I can share this.
Can you stop the share? Share.
Stool is the only thing left, because that's the one change, right?
Yes.
Does anyone have anything that we talked about last week that they want to pull up, change, are we all okay with what we talked about last week?
Other than the school.
Yes, ma'am, but just hold on, just hold on. Ms. Eager, did you have anything you wanted to talk about that we talked about last week? Yeah, so let's just talk about schools. I guess we've got schools and CIP.
Okay, so. So if you want to make that adjustment to the insurance.
I did, I want to change the eighteen to fifteen.
Are you changing it up?
Our second line.
So.
When I go down to schools.
Well, let's just, let's go to the top real quick. Let's go to the top. So. So there, so right now, what we have in there, and there's some, some discussion about where we ended up last week. So we had eighty-one five in our. So we had eighty-nine five in our final budget, wherever we ended up. Now, I don't remember if the board wants, we had something different, but, but anyway, at eighty-nine five, our current tax rate. With some changes that occurred, and, and the schools are under, so, so we received some updated numbers from the schools for what it's going to take for them to implement. The five percent increase over the biennium, which is there, they gave. A one percent COLA and maybe, and maybe steps this, this one year. And, and to implement a four percent COLA. In fiscal year twenty-two, they needed what, three hundred and forty-three thousand? Three forty-three. Yep. So they're down to the schools.
So you catch that, Ms. Booker?
Yeah, I have.
They shrunk theirs by two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I hope we didn't give them.
I have a question. They did a one percent. That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this year, they're giving a four.
Yes.
We have given our employees a five.
Yes.
And we gave them one percent.
Now.
And we get, what's the difference? If we want to keep everybody the same, what's the difference?
So, and, and maybe they can speak to that because county employees just get COLAs, county employees don't get steps. Where, where their employees could get a COLA or a step or whatever is bigger. So just because they're getting a COLA, if, if a step increase is bigger, instead of getting a step.
Did they do that last year or did they just do one percent?
I believe they did last.
They did one percent.
They did not do a step.
Mr. Winkler, I think Mr. Keith has to go.
Um, Mr. Winkler is on.
They both should be on.
Yeah, they're both on.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Sir? Um, yeah, la- last year, we gave one percent. We have uh twenty-seven different scales slash pay bands. The ones that. Mister Doll or would be referring to would be mainly three or four steps on teacher A. So if you value or you honor the teacher scales, there are certain steps on the teacher scale. Uh, they may be bigger steps, twenty years or thirty years. Different divisions do different things where there may be more than one percent. But what we did last year was one percent across the board or the step, which was ever higher. For most employees, literally more than. Sixty percent of our employees, they got one percent, just the average of, of one percent. But if you were on the teacher scale, you got one percent or the step, and there's. Easily five or six steps on the teacher scale that's higher than one percent. This year, we're doing the same thing with the four percent. Um, it's four percent for everybody. Or a step which is ever higher, and we only have a couple of steps which is slightly higher than the four percent. Coincidentally, even with that step, even, even with that. We still don't average, even on the teacher scale, five percent at a four percent flat. Um, so the arguments are all, all in theory right, but if. One entity was giving five percent across the board, we would not be doing that. And we certainly wouldn't be doing that for the bulk of our overall employees. Um, we have a number of folks on pay bands and, and steps that are far less than one, you know, one percent or four percent, or making sure every step is at least four percent, or everybody on a pay band is four percent this year within the budget. The reason you see a decreased number is, we got, we went back and recalculated once we actually pulled the template down from the state, and we are getting more money under certain categories. One of them is the raise piece that's coming in through the state. To do the five percent across the biennium. So we were able to decrease our ask and still be able to do more from a compensation piece because we were getting more money from the state. Uh, I don't know if Ms. Gillen has anything to add to that because I think she is on the call as well, but I'll be, we'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Mister Winkler, so, so the three forty-three is the five percent over the biennium, and if, if you were to do a five percent. Al- also for this, this year, what, what does, what is the request of?
It would be right around six hundred thousand dollars. We've ran the number, but we can only run the number based on the current employees. It would be right around six hundred thousand dollars. That would allow us to do a five percent, basically, flat raise and/or the step. And in this case, there's only going to be two or three steps. On the teacher scale, and I can almost tell you where they would be. They're going to be around twenty-three, twenty-four on teacher A. That would be slightly higher than five percent. When I say slightly, I mean literally. Five point four or something. I don't have it memorized, and I don't have it in front of me right now. But that, that ask would go up about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take. Um, to six hundred thousand. Did you hear that? Okay, Mister Doll? I can't, I'm.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So are we. Are we figuring out county employees other than government or the schools? We try to keep their raises the same. How is that what Mister Winkler is saying? Is he saying that they need to go five percent because they did. One, and they're doing four, and we're doing five, or is he, on Mister Winkler, you're saying that you all are okay where you are?
Now, this, the simplicity of your question um would be this, Ms. Booker. If, if the county did one percent and you're doing five percent. Again, this year, you're hoping to do five percent, then your overall raise over the course of the biennium, and I know your language is not worded to the biennium. Um, your overall raise would be six percent. Our raise across the biennium, and our language literally states that in order to get the state money, says it can be five percent across the biennium. So the one percent and the four percent for the, literally the bulk, and I'm talking the large number, not the largest pool as far as the money. The largest number of our employees would be five percent. We would be a percent less. No, we're hoping to do the same thing that you all are hoping to do. We just didn't calculate it that way because of the language. But I, obviously, I would love to be able to give our employees the same as the county is giving, which is a six percent across the biennium, or that's what you're hoping to do right now. The language for educators includes a five percent average, whereas for law enforcement and other officials, it says five percent this year. And that, that's just the language and the raise that's coming out of General Assembly in Richmond.
The only other thing to add is that we've been, we've talked to some of our neighboring divisions, and they're doing five percent for their school employees.
And for, for fiscal year twenty-two, is that correct, Miss Gillen?
Yes, that's what we're, that's what we're hearing.
And one other thing that we did, the schools have able to do with bonuses.
I, I will say, the board, the board is talking about the possibility of a bonus this year. Uh, we would, we would like to be able to do that, but we're still evaluating our current dollars to make sure. Obviously, we're, we're in solid shape to be able to do that. The board is considering that.
So again, at eighty-nine five, we have a six seventy-one surplus. Depending on where the board goes, we had another two fifty. Roughly two fifty, I let that burn us down to four. Four twenty as, as a surplus.
Good. Let's see. To keep raises the same.
They said that it would be six percent. Five percent.
Six percent over the biennium. The way they wrote it in Richmond, the five percent for teachers this year is the one percent last year plus four this year. The way they wrote it for everybody in county-wise was five percent this year. So they got one percent last year also. So that's where it's going.
So in county as well as schools, over two years, you see, it's six percent.
If we give another two fifty.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Or you could give four percent to the county.
Yeah.
But then we would lose money from the state that they would be.
And social services have to have their five percent.
Part of it does.
Not for next year, it's fifteen percent.
No, no, that's just for the one position.
Trying to keep this, right, I agree with you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Eager?
The grant or from the state that allows the um social services to get five percent. So that's not the local people paying that.
The, 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 the state does not cover one hundred percent of the five percent increase for social services.
Only fifteen, fifteen percent.
Yeah, you're correct. You're correct. Yes.
But they put the money in the eight fifty-five. They, they will put the money in our baseline budget. So it will be at the eighty-four and a half, fifteen and a half.
No, it's not very dark.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is. We go, all the money goes in our baseline budget.
But the social services, the state realizes if they don't make as much as other people, they have an incredibly marked off. Some would be twenty-five or thirty-five. Say ninety percent or less than fifty.
Is that ninety percent of them or what?
Under, under what, fifty thousand dollars, I would say.
I have to look.
Yeah, I have.
Probably.
Yeah.
Maybe not that high, but.
Maybe it's forty-five. It's unbelievable when you look at their salaries and what they have to do. And I think the state are saying, okay, we need to fix this. So I don't know that that means that everybody needs to do this. We have a problem, or. Try to fix that without. When you're fixing everybody or changing everything.
But I think not only was it social services, well, wasn't it constitutional officers, sheriff's deputies? It's constitutional officers, sheriff, sheriff's deputies, they're all. And I think, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're different percentages on everything.
Well, no, for the, for the constitutional officers, the comp board only funds uh comp board funded positions. So if the sheriff's office has.
Twenty deputies. I, I, I got that number memorized. Twenty of them are comp board funded, so we can give a five percent raise to twenty of them. And tell the other seventeen or whatever it is, sorry, you don't get a raise. So that's why.
We balance that.
That, and balances it. Yes, sir. But I mean, so that, that's where it gets crazy. It's when that starts down.
Everybody has to make what the.
I'm not trying to point fingers, but just trying to keep things balanced. Everybody in the county side is getting five percent.
Okay, I, can, can you talk in terms of, of state budget and how much is going to come?
Well, well, it's a, it's a little complicated because we actually have two um. We have two salaries. So we have a county budget and a state budget. They're very different. And in our county budget, we have one budget line for staffing operations. And in our state budget, we have two budget lines for staffing operations. And in our state budget, we're giving so much money. Um, nine hundred and some thousand in our, in our base of staffing operations, and that comes at an eighty-five. Eighty-four and a half percent state match, fifteen and a half percent local. And so we use those funds first, and we usually run out in December. So. Where we go into our other staffing operations budget line, which is sixty-five percent local, thirty-five percent set.
So much of the money, like thirty million taken and saved. I was going away because I thought.
Thirty millions for programs for, not for people.
Well, it doesn't matter. It, but it costs. And even, even what you just said, that the salary is just eighty-five percent.
Anytime the state gives us something, if it's funds for a COLA or a new position, a hundred percent of the money goes into our base budget, which is the. Eighty-four and a half percent state match, fifteen and a half percent local.
So Kim, when you talked, when you were saying that in December, you run out of the, the base budget, so then what? So the county's picking up a higher percentage at that point, what is the county picking up a higher percentage of salaries?
Of staffing operations.
From decent, from January to June?
You just said that sixty-five percent.
And then it's sixty-five percent local.
Yes.
Right. So um.
PhD, you figure this one.
It's, it's very complicated. So for, for all of our staff to get a five percent pay increase, it would cost seventy-seven thousand dollars. And so the state puts. Eighty-four and a half percent of that, which is sixty-five thousand, into our base budget. And then the other twelve thousand is a local match.
Yeah, that's understanding.
For the raise, but not for all the salaries. That's just the range.
Right. Yeah, that's for the five percent pay increase.
So throughout the year, once December, um, the county, the county is paying for a higher percentage of salaries. So is that correct, Jim?
But then all the money was still put in the base budget, so our base budget's on a platform there.
Um. You know, um, a couple of years ago, we had trusted services. Hey, we went in and changed a lot of the pay to bring them competitive with other socialists and to keep down the pressure. Remember, we did things like.
Two years together.
We did a lot to put, and every, every advertisement that I get that I read, when you have a position open. It gives an amount, it may say thirty-five thousand, but it depends on your experience. So that person could make more. And. And you know, I know it's tough that, that they do, but I think we've done, tried a lot to try to bring those salaries up for social service people.
And so I would like to, to speak to that. So two years ago, we did an alignment study, and it brought all of our employees, except for three, up to. Where they should be according to the alignment study. But that alignment study is based on our peak, which are extremely low.
Yeah.
And because the pay bands are extremely low, the General Assembly this year approved to increase pay bands. For family services positions by twenty percent and for all other positions by fifteen percent. And so once that happens.
Right.
It's going to create compression. And if we were to do a new alignment study based on the new pay bands, everyone's going to be under.
Yeah, and you need to keep up with the pay bands and.
Well, here's my one question. Why don't, instead of them going to try and fix a problem and creating another problem for all of us, why don't they just fix it? When they fix it? For lack of a better word. Why, why don't they just fix it instead of saying, hey, here you go, figured it out?
Yeah. So last year, they approved the pay band increase. And what they did, they approved. A three percent increase just for social service employees to address the compression. But then due to COVID, all of that got unallotted. And it got brought back up this year. And we thought the pay increase was going to be specifically for compression, but the way they worded it, they worded it as a COLA.
Oh, I agree with that. Crazy. Okay.
They had that many assets and then. So going back to. So, Miss, Miss Eager, did we help? Did, did it help explain what Ms. Booker is trying to say about the? The only thing she's saying is, if you do a two-year total, everybody in the county is getting six percent, and the school system is getting back.
In the two years, everybody gets six.
You know, well, if, if, if the board. If, if we add the two fifths, everybody would get six.
Yeah, and two's basically.
Which is basically what we said last week when we said six. And, and last year, we think county is a one percent bonus.
County got a one percent, and then the bonus paid.
Because the state gave a bonus to.
Five hundred dollar bonus, and I think it cost the county seven, seven thousand.
Yep.
Is that fine?
Yes, ma'am. I can't remember if it was seventy-seven thousand, but it was five hundred for full-time and two fifty for.
Is there a new bonus money in your plan?
No, I think that was just a one-time. That wasn't, that wasn't tariff funding. That was just the state came up, said, let's do this to those people.
So what, and so what does, what if the school needs two fifty?
They're, they're asking for two fifty to get a five percent as well. They're, they're asking for two fifty to get a five percent as well. I'm not sure if they are.
Three hundred, I thought they needed six thousand.
Okay, so it'll wind up being six hundred, just down to six hundred.
Sorry, no, yeah, right now in my budget, I have three hundred. We thought in, in my proposed budget, and then through some of their requests, which was originally going to be a total of seven hundred eighty seven thousand, that came down because they're getting more state money, so then the only difference for, to implement that five percent is the forty three.
Put in two, where's the two fifty, so we can look at it, and we'll get what the rate is.
But.
And.
I'm sorry.
Can you put in the, what do you, uh, what is that, equals two fifty?
Ten, 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 or fifty two?
Equals. Yeah, equals the twenty-three plus two fifty.
What, four twenty-five?
The, the, the other thing that, that I don't see that we talked about last time too was public safety MRR, which I definitely want to see at least a hundred thousand of that. So that we start saving.
I'm trying to see what the school is, and I'll see where.
Two ninety three.
You're right there, so, so five ninety three.
Five ninety three.
Five ninety three, that's what's in there.
That shows the surplus of four hundred and one thousand.
To me, to me, in COVID times, I just assume we try to cut it as much as we can to keep from having an increase. Lower, lower, lower our increase as much as we possibly.
It's not, it's not going to happen, increase for sure, but.
No, 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 not increase over eighty nine, no, no, eighty nine five, I'm talking about eighty six five.
Right.
So the only, you know, I mean, at this point, the board would say, well, it's lower than real estate tax, or it's lower than personal property tax, or we have.
Combination of. Or combination there.
A new combination, too.
So how much are we missing?
No, we're not missing any, we still have four hundred and twenty five thousand.
The surplus of four hundred and twenty, twenty one thousand.
Twenty one.
Yeah.
Or, right.
You lower the tax, and I probably just live with it.
Well, how much is a pin, a nickel on personal property?
I think a nickel's about a hundred and, lower the penny tax.
Well, no, we're.
Go back.
I would do it.
Well, I, I just.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, never.
What, was that the?
You wouldn't?
There it is. Because it's a one-time.
No, we can lower, you can lower the personal property.
Right, right, but your car prices will readjust from that.
Okay, I'm just, I, I'm just, if we've got four hundred and twenty one thousand, and we're trying to do it, we got, what is it, three twenty?
Three twenty two for.
There's a penny, if we went to eighty eight five, and we took a nickel off a personal property.
One nineteen, so you're a little over if you do that.
It'd be close. Nineteen, yeah.
Where, where are we in our personal property, um, in relationship of accounting?
We're, we're still high, we're still high.
We're in the third highest.
Third highest.
I know what you're saying, it's going to angle out, I'm just saying that's a place where we can get it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Liz is going to pull up a chart showing, showing all our, our game.
Are we second highest, or?
Third.
Third half? Who's, who's ahead of us?
Somebody said five, Green's higher than him, I said five overall.
I think it's five.
Somebody said five, Green. The five.
Green, that, that, it comes with one.
Is it four fifty?
That's surprising.
Well, lower by a nickel, you're still at the third highest, don't you?
I mean, I'm just trying to do what's like, not everybody owns property, everybody owns a car.
Yeah. And how much would that get us if we lowered it?
We would be nineteen thousand short, I think.
If you were, if you lower real estate a penny and personal property a nickel, yeah, you're going to be a little bit short.
I, 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 I will bet that winds up balancing itself out.
So again, I'm still advocating for a public safety MRR, Mr. Sheridan said he's not interested in doing that, but.
Is anybody interested in doing a pu- public, public safety MRR?
If you actually put aside some money for public safety, which we talked about last week, you know, I think that's an important thing to do. Rather than, you know, save a nickel on, on this, or, or, you know, go from eighty five to eighty eight point seven five.
Well, from eighty nine five to eighty eight five.
Right, I'm just saying to go to eighty eight point seven five.
That wouldn't sound.
Well, I'd originally said like a hundred thousand, that's what I had suggested, and we have some, some folks from the sheriff's, some, uh, department there, and I think it's just a good start, and we have three other counties that are doing it. Just another step towards us.
Well, MRR, does anyone else want to do that, I mean, that, you know? We still haven't talked about our C I P, but I think we've.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be the main one we have to talk about, but we can talk about people funding those, so that's, that's not going to necessarily bother our rate here.
No.
So you do that later, which that's obviously what we.
Right.
That C I P would have one point seven five, one hundred.
And that's.
And that, and that, and it's a big thing that we talked about, one point seven five.
Yeah. Yeah, one, yeah, well, we, we've ordered that, there's still some things we have.
Yeah, let's, let's finish, let's see if we figure this out.
So now the take is for a public safety MRR.
Now, we're still, I'm still, I'm listening.
Miss Eager, are you, are you for the MRR setting aside money or using the general fund? Pretty much kind of the same thing. Me.
Um.
At the end of the year?
No.
That, that, that's when we put it to the general fund if we need it, they come ask.
I think that's some, that is something that we need to be committed to. And we're going to do it.
We need to be committed, I totally agree.
And if we're going to do it, then, then if we don't do it now, we can't forget it, we need to do it whenever we have, whatever.
When we have a regular meeting, we should have that on the agenda and work with, with what, uh, has been said before on that, and pull that, some of the resources that we don't need.
I mean, I, I, I know what you're saying, you're, you're saying, go ahead, set money aside for it, but to me, that's what we do when we put money in the general fund, instead of handing money back to each department, is we set that money there.
Why are we, that's the logic, then why are we putting aside money for the schools there for, you know, public works? We use that logic, then we just don't set that money aside, cut the tax rates by another thing.
Yeah, I mean, usually. We give them, we give those two money, so the thing will get fixed up, yeah.
Well, that, that's kind of the same theory, at least the way I understood it, you know, over this year, it doesn't really matter, but I think this is something that.
We can have a good discussion.
Have a good discussion on, and, and the sheriff's department, and, and the fire, fire department, and rescue department can come back and say, here's how that would benefit us. It just seems to me that, you know, we had a presentation from Fire Chiefs, we have three different counties represented, all of them had a public safety MRR, and all of it basically said, we use this money to help us allocate, you know, for these larger sort of bulk purchases, such as, you know, replacing SCBA, or buying, you know, new fire hoses, or, you know, buying new guns, rather than sort of one-time hit. And to me, that just meant, made sense to start to set money aside for those purposes, rather than having these competing kind of items that are, you know, for lack of a better word, in the way, the same way the schools came in and said, you know, computers are now, you know, something that just needs to be in the school budget, around the C I P budget, you know, you could say the same thing about guns, right?
No, no, some of that stuff does get funded in, in somewhat of an operational budget at times, for both fire, rescue, and, and, well, I mean, villains, I mean, major wells, you guys purchase guns periodically out of your regular budget. Yeah, and so, what's that?
That's not a C I, the guns aren't C I.
No, I mean, no, I mean, so, you know, from, from staff standpoint, if, if you have, if you're asking us all combined in this one thing, I think we would need some clear guidance and, and some, some, we would need some policy in place for how that's allocated, who gets what, and, um, which we could.
Maybe we just look at that next year.
Yeah, I think, I don't think anybody is saying that that's not what we don't want to do.
Yeah, no, I'm saying we don't want to fund.
But not now, I mean, that's just my personal effect, but I think we do want to do that, we need to do that. And so we don't want to slip, kind of, we refuse, I'm not, we need.
All right, is there anything else that we need to add, look at, strike?
Just, let me just go down and.
I knew you were going to.
So cigarette, cigarette tax, I, I was talking about cigarette tax.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're bypassing the precincts and, uh, potential other board members.
No, that, no, there's.
Until we get it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so cigarette tax. So cigarette tax, I'm, I'm, I'm on kind of a local work group with, with a couple county administrators and some other finance folks talking about cigarette tax. As it stands right now, there seems to be some strong, um, you know, we haven't added that, there seems to be some strong, uh, you know, push towards going in a regional approach. What we're trying, what, what the work group's trying to get is, is really finding out what counties are really kind of committed to implementing this. At, at best, best case scenario right now, it would not be implemented until probably January of this fiscal year. So at most, you could only bet on six months worth of revenue if you wanted to implement something. We did estimates before for, um, and, and, and from some of the work group, there's a kind of a big spreadsheet showing what localities would get based upon some. It was really kind of based upon Charlotte, Charlottesville, the pack per, pack, uh, pack per person and stuff like that. Um, and there's, there's some other localities that have done some things, so we've estimated on a conservative side, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year, once it's all implemented. So if, if we wanted to add something in this year, I would only want to add something very, very small, or if not.
About twenty two thousand six hundred and forty one dollars.
We could.
I think that it's.
Well, why not add nothing into it, and you have a bonus starting into your next budget?
To me, going back to what you just said, with the precincts, whatever we make should be enough to cover with the precincts and the extra registrar.
You, you know, for the precincts this year, there's, and, and there's so much in flux right now.
So, Mr. Payne's not here yet, but, um, I got a call from Mr. Payne yesterday, um, because I have to work on the redistricting stuff. So, he's probably going to talk to you later that we are going to have to move ahead as though we're going to redistrict, even though we don't know what's going to happen. Um, there is conflicting language in the law right now, there, there's a constitutional requirement for localities to set their precincts by June fifteenth. And a constitutional requirement to set our district boundaries by June fifteenth. Now, the precincts get a pass if state and rational lines haven't been set, and they won't be. But localities for district boundaries do not get a pass, so there's conflicting language. And we're required by law to use the census data to create those. I talked to David Mont today, and, and he doesn't know anything, but it's his suspicion that there will be a called special session of the general assembly to address this, to, or to give guidance in some way. So we got a pretend link for redistricting, we don't know what's going to happen, and we can't use the census data because we're probably not going to get it until October.
So June of fifteenth is the day.
It's the day.
And if you were confused when we talked about social service.
Yeah, so, um, it's actually on for later tonight when we talk about strategic initiatives, and when Mr. Payne is here, because he had very good reasons for why he thinks we should move forward. And we can, we can talk a little bit more about what we think we can do, what we can't do. But I suspect there will be guidance coming out of the general assembly.
You have to use census data, but doesn't the state have to look at the census data before we actually use it?
Yes, so there's really.
Doesn't go to the dam. They're not going to get it till October, and they've got forty five days to look at it, that's past the election.
It's past any deadline there is, so.
It's, 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 it's just.
They're all down there, they're all down there, watch surveying, yeah, so.
So we will, uh, keep listening for what's happening, but Mr. Payne can talk more later tonight about why he thinks we need to pretend.
I think people ask.
So, okay, so, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Before we, I like to hear, I like to hear that. Um, before we, I like to know why the census, I would call it that, like, do we have concrete reasons why, I see, I hear speculation, I hear blame, I hear this, this, and that, are there real legitimate reasons why the census, where that, if the public hasn't made a deal with?
One word would be killed.
Absolutely.
Oh, so, we know why, so.
There were a lot of losses as well, too, there were a lot of losses.
Losses, right, and so, we have to do what the people are there for, so that's what we have to do.
Well, we have to do what, what first down from the code, we're doing it.
Like we said, we have, we can, what I'm facing, asking, facing.
So, the census bureau back in February announced that it will deliver the redistricting data to all states by September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Division of Legislative Services says it needs at least thirty days to then turn that around and be what they need to be, and.
So by election day.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
We have to move that.
It, it's not worth worrying about, but we can't control any of it.
Every little town.
And I'm not getting funny.
Yeah, but I mean, it is, it, 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 the challenge.
It is aggravating.
It's aggravating, but the challenge also is, it's great to set the districts, but you, you know, how do you have candidates run for a district that's not technically approved?
That's right, might be, you know, signatures from another district.
Or, or they might not live in that district by the time.
That's right.
Alexa. Sure, Mr. Payne can talk about that, but what I have read is, gets even weirder, is that you would run in the districts as they exist the day, March fifteenth.
So.
And you have a special election.
We'd have five run, and we decided to just stay.
So we district, but you would run under all districts and have a special election the next time.
So if we decided to go to six or seven, then we go ahead and try to digit that out, but there's a special election for all the candidates at that point, or just a new candidate?
I think you would have to do it under your new redistricting.
New district.
Now, New Jersey got.
So, uh, we ran in November, we'd have to run again whenever the special election happened, if it makes sense.
So.
Do we have to, oh my God.
So you need some guidance from.
That's a good, we need guidance.
So anyway, so.
I think somebody else needs that.
I think somebody needs medication.
So, so to go back to cost for, for, for additional supervisors and precincts, you know, the, the one thing that, that we could do is, you know, since it's such influx, you know, the board, the board's, um, contingency might be able to cover, I mean, well, certainly it could cover probably one hundred, one hundred percent of that for one year.
I mean, but the precincts might even be in place before, no, no, anyhow, so.
Yeah, but then for the special elections, wouldn't you have to cover?
Yeah.
Which would be before June, July one, so.
So you might serve for four and a half years.
And, and so you might serve for three months.
Yeah.
If somebody decides to run again.
Yeah. Then they'd be shorted, uh, three months, they'd be.
They only get three years.
Nine months.
So. I used to have white hair, I mean, I mean brown hair.
What happened?
My district.
I'm sorry, but.
So anyways, cigarette tax.
We got a laugh at some of this.
Better to laugh than cry.
Yes, sir, that's, that's.
So, is there anything else, any other areas that the board wants to look at, I mean, right now, we're twenty-two short, and we could.
Pull it out of the air.
I would like to talk about.
Say what?
This July, that's the thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So one, one of the items, well, actually two items that were in my, my original C I, uh, original operational budget request that did not make it into, uh, Mr. Doll's request, are the recruitment and retention policies, so the cancer policy for firefighters, and the, uh, property tax relief for fire and rescue. They're very, fairly small amounts in both cases, but I think they're very important for recruitment and retention. So I, I would like to, if you have time, I'd like to have your thoughts on those, too.
What's the amount?
Almost like twelve thousand.
I think one was thirty thousand, one was fourteen thousand, so.
That, that sounds about right.
Cancer was, cancer was small.
Personal property was around thirty, thirty-five, thirty-seven.
Yep, and then fourteen thousand for cancer. That would be fifty-one.
Thirty-seven for the cancer.
No, thirty-seven is personal property. I think that was two hundred and fifty dollars in personal property relief. I think that was two hundred and fifty dollars a personal property release.
I think that's what we calculated it on.
So, so what's, what's the criteria for that?
It would have to, so we'd have to actually develop a policy, then it would be active members only. So it'd be people that run some percentage of the calls.
Would it count those, uh? This is going to sound terrible, I'm not pointing a finger or picking, but like somebody that ran bingo. Or bingo, is it just going to be call runners?
Our original, our original, uh, thoughts on that would be just call runners, yeah.
You know, what do we call it, uh, adult.
So, yeah, so this would, so our original plan and the way this was calculated was for people that are actually running calls, not, not auxiliary members, not, not active life members, that sort of thing, really the people that are running the calls. And that's where it came from. And, and when you think about what the volunteers provide for this county, um, as compared to, uh, what it would cost for careers, I think this is a very small amount. The other thing I would like to throw out there at this point is if you look at the revenue recovery, the volunteers over the last few years have brought in approximately fifty percent more than the career staff over that same period of time, despite there being two career crews for a significant part of that. So I think this is a valid and reasonable, uh, request, um, to thank the volunteers for what they're doing, especially given that they are bringing in a very significant amount of the revenue recovery into the coffers.
Would that be above and beyond the, the.
Thirty-three dollars.
Thirty-three dollar tag or would you?
I would like to see it above and beyond, but it's, that's obviously your choice.
With y'all's math, did y'all?
We didn't. So this was above and beyond.
So that's, yeah, that, that's on very fast.
Yeah, so, so that, that number there is the above and beyond. And which obviously I would like.
Folks.
I would support that.
Well, I, I think the cigarette tax, that, that could be with cigarette tax coverage right there. With the cigarette tax. Ma'am?
Let's, uh, finish the cigarette.
Okay, before we talk about that one.
When you have to, go into the cigarette tax, I mean, again, I don't think it's going to be import. The early sense can be implemented by January and. So from my standpoint, you know, we're using, we're using another locality's projections that I only think the cigarette tax would come in. Just my personal thing, I would rather see some, I would rather see some data and, and numbers on the cigarette tax before we budgeted any figures in there, especially for this fiscal year. Let's just say we, let's just say implemented by January, it would be nice to get three months worth of data to see what the cigarette tax is coming in to budget maybe for the next year. You know, just with so many things that are in flux and, and, you know, this, this whole regional entity isn't even in place and it's just discussions right now. I'm a little wary to put any cigarette tax in the budget right now.
I think that's right.
Talking to, what are the other jurisdictions that?
So the, the, so the city of Charlottesville already does a cigarette tax. They, they implement it on their own, but they're, they are interested, doesn't mean they're going to be interested in doing a regional approach. County overall has been in these discussions, Louisiana County, um, Orange County, pretty much a lot of the, the localities in the Thomas Jefferson planning commission. And there's also been discussions of it being bigger, being more kind of a regional thing. That could include Nelson, or there's been some localities over the mountains that have, have even asked about this too. So it could be a bigger thing. And so what would happen is the Thomas Jefferson planning district commission would kind of administer and be the fiscal agent, but there would be some type of, uh, regional cigarette tax board or authority which would have representation from each locality, which then we haven't gotten to the details. That would, that would represent the board. And then, you know, you'd have some employees that would administer the tax, um, that, you know, coordinating with wholesale distributors, doing enforcement, making, you know, going around, making sure that, um, uh, stores are, are in fact, uh, selling cigarettes that have, that have that action.
But you don't have a regional, which is still a big cross line by the cigarettes, like in New York, Jersey, North Carolina, and by the cigarettes. So, you know, you really have to have it as a agreement to be to.
Yeah. Yeah, all their, all their, all, all the, all the counties have been, have been, have been initiated, have been prepared to do it on the regional basis.
Because we never had the opportunity. We, we didn't have the opportunity, the only cities could do it. And now they've given us the opportunity to join in on these.
That's because people in Charlottesville are good.
Yeah.
So maybe a bathroom. Relaxation and doing, basically, letting us come up with a tax that we haven't been able to do before.
So again, for the cigarette tax, I think it's something that's on, on the horizon, but I'm not necessarily sure it's, it's that far along for this fiscal. That's, that's my thought.
So if we put in the fifty-five, eight, fifty, come with a bunch of cancer and the, uh, project tax. That puts us over the.
Seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But add eighty-eight five, you can adjust it to eighty-eight point six five.
I'm not so sure, we probably won't get more news from other places.
We have to advertise.
Yeah, but we don't advertise it now.
We advertise at seven AM. Yeah, we have to, we're going to look, but we're hoping we can get it all.
Can we be negative before we advertise?
Well, we have to have a balance, but.
Right, so we're not going to get new information. Are we going to get new information during the regular meeting?
No.
And I?
No, I mean, during the meetings, just, just the formality.
So we put in the fifty thousand dollars that, you know, has been requested by the fire department, fire rescue, which I think when we talk about attainment, um, volunteers and recruiting efforts, you know, we all know that that's a challenge to deal with, so to me, that's something like that. Well, worthwhile.
We've been talking about this for years.
Ms. Ager, what do you, my only point about that is the volunteers allow us not to have paid groups. And the rescue squad crews cost us how much for one, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Four hundred, right?
Yeah.
So if you had, basically you'd have four times four hundred thousand if you had a crew in each building. And if we had to go to pay fire crews, it wouldn't be, we put one in Belmar. You have one at Kent Store, one at fourteen, you want it to lake, one at Thomas. So then you look at one point sixteen in the minimum. So that, you could say that saves us that amount of money annually.
Yeah, for the, for the personal property tax, I mean, I will.
I'm, I'm a fireman, so I'm going to try to sit this one out. Okay, hopefully, I said try.
We, we would want to see some, maybe a beneficial thing, we would want to see some calls. So some calls or volunteer, some, some hours, some requirements, but.
Right, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We, we just don't want someone to volunteer an hour, hour a month and, and you know.
Somebody shows up one call a month.
Yeah, if they do volunteer for one call a month, that's fantastic.
You can put it in the budget subject to approval.
Maybe just set some rules, period, yeah.
Well, I think that, that's where the fire and rescue can go. The four, the four. Can hash that out, but I think we have to either put it in or don't put it in.
So are you talking about putting both items in or just one order or the opposite?
Ms. Ager, what do you think, man?
Well, anyway.
Come, come up this way. Chief Lime.
So. At this point, we don't have, uh, a finalized policy, but we have discussed that it would be, have to be a certain percentage of the calls to be key part of it. Now, it gets a little tricky because sometimes people spend hours sitting at a, at the rescue squad, for example, and they don't get any calls that day. They still put in their twelve hours, but it doesn't, it's not reflected in their call range. So I, yeah, we can't say they have to run a hundred percent of the calls if you know, it's going to have to be some percentage. And we are still discussing and negotiating what that percentage should be. But it's not going to be one call a month, it's going to be some significant percentage.
Fire departments have the regulations, so you have to provide it, which is, well, look at it and see what they're doing and then adjust.
Absolutely, so, so some of this Alamar County is a perfect example of that. So we can use their regulations as a starting point. And that's, and that's exactly where we're looking at.
Why can't you use so many hours a year and, and then they can sign in on that and you'll, then you'll know.
Sure, that, that.
And that's easy enough to do.
Like, like people that do duty crews or something, you know?
Yeah.
So if you go by and take a truck somewhere.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we, we have, we have records of all of that, so.
And they can keep it up on a weekly basis.
Absolutely, yeah, so, so that, that's a possibility. I mean, that's an easy way to do it.
Very.
Um, and, and, and those records are there, so that's something that, that's a way we could do it. It could be, it could be hours, and that would, that would include training hours as well as, as actual duty hours. You know, the, some of the fire departments don't run duty crews, they just show up on calls, so it gets a little complicated. But, but I think there are ways to resolve that. So it could be X number of calls plus X number of hours, you know, something like that.
This percentage of calls, but now, let, then see, what Chief Lime's doing, a good job of getting around is, like in fire department, you have first responder calls, well, if you're not a first responder, you're not allowed to go to those. So, you know, take those out of the picture and just say, here's the fire calls that we had. How many of this percentage did you run? This is really the only ones, I'll just use me, I can only, I can go to a first responder, but I have to be asked by the rescue squad to come. I can't just show up on my own or I get in trouble.
Exactly. And, and, you know, with my water rescue chief said on, the water rescue team doesn't get the same number of calls as some of the other departments, but they put in lots of hours of training, um, to keep their skills up because they don't get the calls and they'll, they'll take the practice on, on scene as it were. So, you know, there's, there's going to be some discussions there, but, but as Mr. Pepper points out, there, there's guidance out there for us that we can look at how other, how other agencies do it. But there will be very strict criteria on who is qualified for this. It won't be a, a wide open, anybody goes, there will be criteria.
I would assume that'd be presented to the board, right?
We're quite happy to do that, yes.
When they come up with.
And my suggestion is, you know, put, put it in the budget line, I mean, when they come up with the policy and we approve it, then it's active at that point in time.
Yeah, we just have to figure out if we're putting them in or we're funding a problem.
That's one of those things, we get close enough. Little bit of the hat.
Yeah.
What, 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 what happens if you change the tax rate to eighty-eight six five?
Or you can change for the profit.
Or change for some.
First off, we need to decide if we'll put it in.
I'm saying, if you have to change that, you're ninety-eight thousand. Plenty of world to.
What'd you do, what'd you do, Liz?
They switched it out to one ninety-five on personal property.
That's a hundred and nineteen. If you did that, oh, so ninety-eight for the good, then you could go to eighty-eight one. I mean.
Fifty thousand, seven fifty.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Ms. Ager, uh, what do you think, ma'am?
I'm looking at this screen, and did you put it back to ninety-five?
I put the personal property tax back to four thirty-five.
We took all personal property, she put it back on.
I put the nickel back in personal property.
Just as an example.
Definitely, and that gave us how much money?
Ninety-eight thousand, if you look up.
Top right corner. The ground number on top right.
Okay, and I'm happy to put it back to the eighty-nine five and the four thirty to see what that does, if you would like to see that.
That would be a bigger number because that's three nineteen.
We don't need that much, we just need.
Right.
If you take it back down to eighty-nine.
No, we're still at eighty-eight five.
She's just showing me. Yeah, you can do what you have to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I can do about one penny.
That puts us back at eighty-nine five and four thirty.
But we haven't told them whether or not to put in the fire and rescue, two things, the two items, the fire and rescue.
And but that didn't add equal to sixty thousand?
Fifty-one, fifty-one thousand.
And then if you put it in, you'd be back to two fifty?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's not changing the, either one?
That's changing the personal property down to four thirty from four thirty-five and leaving the real estate where it was.
Okay. What if you put the personal property back up to the, uh, real estate there?
And we could possibly end up paying.
What do you want to put the real estate at?
Put it at eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight will be the red.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's, put it at eighty-eight or sixty-three thousand. And that doesn't include the fire.
That does not include the fire and rescue. Or eighty-eight, eighty-eight two. If, if you went eighty-eight two and put in the rescue squad, the fire, the fifty-one thousand, that.
Eighty-eight seven is what that is.
Or eighty-eight seven.
Oh, that's with the nickel, that was, that's with the nickel.
Yeah, I put the personal property out there.
Yeah.
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 So it should be about eighty-eight two.
But that, that covers it.
Eighty-eight two, we still have an eighty-eight.
We haven't put fifty-one, we haven't put fifty-one in yet, so we're still forty above, which would be about a penny and a half or ten and a half. So you could go to eighty-eight three.
John, John, one question for you. This is the cancer policy, what's that based on? How many people and what's, what's the dollar amount? How's that, how's that quote come? That, uh, that was based on firefighters only, I believe. So it's whatever that is, a hundred and fifty-ish firefighters.
That's an insurance policy?
That's a, that's an insurance amendment, yeah, so that, that occupational, uh, related cancer would be covered by the, uh, the insurance policy, the current insurance policy. And the, and the spot, I believe it was about seventeen thousand dollars per year additional on top of the, the current bring-in, which is. Um, I actually don't know that number, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, that's right, so we cover their, their treatment and, and, uh, long-term disability. So it's one of the local discounts I could apply.
But the cancer has to be related to the. Breathing, all those tucks, and then your lungs, it's like, okay.
That is correct, cancers, after cardiac issues, cancer is one of the biggest killers of firefighters.
Well, treat them medical?
Yes, so it's, it's, it's. Well, this, not necessarily, not necessarily in their, in their medical research, so. Well, so this would be an additional risk for the firefighter. So, so right now, the local council is back, other, other medical insurance, not everybody else is going to get some rest set. So this is, this is a benefit that we, we would like to have for our firefighters because they are exposed to these.
Okay, what's the holdup? Are we done?
Well. All right. Ms. Ms. Ager, are you okay with looking at it with the fire departments, the fifty-one in there, I think you. Agree, agree with that.
Yeah, we need to look at it.
Okay, so put the fifty-one, whatever. That's fifty-two thousand. But we'll still have forty-six left over. That's it. Eighty-eight five, correct?
Yeah, with four thirty-five.
Right, four thirty-five, we can't take a half of any, I mean, two and a half cents off. It'll kill us. Forty six thousand. Forty six thousand to the good, so drop to eighty eight three.
Okay.
Nineteen to the good.
Ooh, thirteen thousand surplus.
We can also advertise high and still grow before we adopt.
Yeah, remember at this point.
What happens if you drop personal property to two eighty?
This one?
Yeah.
That's not, that's not.
Do one more. Oh, just business personal property?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, I mean.
We have one point down, we're trying to get that number down to.
We did it one, we did it one time, cut that twice.
No, I I I wonder from a commissioner's standpoint, this is my only question, is is there any difference between having maybe not two different personal property rates for the for the business and then the public utilities?
Yeah, I'd leave that one, let's go back to two nine.
Let's go back, let's change it to two eighty.
It's gonna stay at zero.
So we're twenty seven hundred short there.
Yeah, so let's go back to two nine, just leave the surplus. Go back to two ninety. And we can still adjust this, this is just a vote to advertise it, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, the thirteen thousand, we can add that to the board contingency, just to round it off if we.
Yeah, let's do that.
Ms. Seager? You good with that this week?
What what's the rate?
Eighty eight four is going to be the advertising rate.
Well, you can advertise whatever you want to, I don't give a, probably doesn't mean anything at this point.
Right. Thank you, five, yes, it's the advertising eighty eight four.
So what's, well, before we finish, what we have to go to the CIP goes.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Then just put in that line, just put uh that's, yeah, access. So go to the uh, the tab that says the debt tab.
Start with the CIP?
No, the uh, well. I go to the other one, next one to the, that one, and then scroll over to the. Probably. So so again, this was what we had come up with, and 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 there was there was some talk about changing some things in this too. Like, for instance, we have, so in there, we've got sixteen five for county admin building, DSS and other building rentals. We have Abrams at a million two fifty, Carriage Brook at fifth uh, one point five, Parks and Rec PG lights at six eighty five. Hostels at one point one, fire rescue one, one million seven fifty, equipment shed ninety three thousand. Uh, major public works equipment three fifty five, sheriff's vehicles three hundred, and then county vehicles three hundred. So give you a total of twenty three million eight thirty three, and we've got some high water works in there as far as interest rates are concerned. Those rates are based upon about a rate higher than what they're currently right now for planning purposes. Based upon their terms, so so again, we're at a debt payment of uh, one million five eighty four, five hundred eighty four thousand. And so, so is there anything that the board wants to change in here?
All right.
We have to act, we have to advertise this as part of the campaign.
So so yes, because when you're holding a public carry, and the dollar amount for the CIP is within the total budget.
Then thinking about Bill. Register, definitely, social services needs to move. Talking about the village of Palmyra. The offices have probably had the most everyday foot traffic, or the treasurer and commissioner's office. If we leave them there, if we have, if we're able to get shots down there, that'd help, we might help draw traffic to them. I mean, the only thing I'm thinking is, how much money did we just put into renovating both?
Don't know that further.
Probably two fifty. Um, I mean, I I just, you know, we just renovated both of them, that's the only thing I was thinking.
It won't be dealt for three years anyway, and the contract doesn't, isn't it for three years, the contract stays there?
Oh, oh, no, no, I'm not talking about, that's the registrar.
Right.
Right, that's registrar, I'm talking about leaving the commissioner and the treasurer's office where they are. And and.
Okay.
If 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 you need to design the the big building, I'm just trying to think of ways, I'm not trying to pinch pennies. But if we can design the building where if we need it, we could add a oh, small wing on.
I think that's very lax.
So the only reason that we would say otherwise is. What's that? Well, I, well, yes, I mean, was one, going back to the space utilization study, you you certainly were looking at departments and functions that had that had, you know, synergy and 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 did things, you know, for instance, finance and the treasurer's office and commissioner. You know, throughout the year, there's lots of collaboration with with those with those functions. Um, if you have the treasurer down here, then you're gonna have everyone that has to do anything from a monetary standpoint up at elder location and that drags to another location with treasurer's office, so to me, that doesn't, that's, I mean, I mean, that's up to the board. I mean, if you're trying to create efficiencies within your buildings and your departments, that doesn't do it, but that's just my thing. We're gonna, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have all all functions together, why why wouldn't you have them separate?
Well, for one reason, there'd be no reason that we don't tell my.
That's one of the things I was thinking, it's a draw to get people to come up.
And and just that you've spent a lot of money renovating.
I mean, if you're hoping you're gonna sell those buildings. We are hoping we're gonna sell those buildings to people, open up businesses, and people will come to Palmyra. All those old shops, antique shops. You've got a shop man over there, some hats open up. I think that's our idea of making this county.
Yeah, I I think. Didn't you say, Mr. Dollar, that you had had people express interest in those buildings?
We've had, we've had uh, Brian, Brian Ruffalo, we've had shop owners interested in purchasing those buildings. Yes, I mean, once the registrar knew, we we've got a lot.
Yeah.
Was, I said a lot, we've got a few phone calls, a few people that are interested in, even buildings on Main Street. Um, and one thing you could do is the treasurer and commissioner's office is obviously, county would not want to give that up. It's on historically green, you could use that facility for more business, you can use that as a I've said this before, the space utilization, it could be, let the EDA rent that out, and you could have business owners that need small office space, that's our our biggest thing we need this year, is small office space. Palmyra will do well if we're not strangling, you know, we just have so many vehicles from a staff perspective. That's the hard thing for businesses, is there's not much parking, because we're utilizing it all. I think Palmyra will be very well, and we can make it an attraction when we don't have all county staff vehicles everywhere. Well, every building needs to be built like that. Yeah, basically, that's kind of the difficult aspect of Palmyra right now. We see it on the weekends, when we have second Sundays, um, when the village of Palmyra, they're gonna be doing events throughout the year. And the the events go very well, we just, it's kind of a difficult balance right now, how we utilize it Monday through Friday.
And that's a chore that that those bodies put together, I mean, we used to have a map where different banks where people would come in. And we could make it a real nice county seat.
I think you diminish the argument for the administration building if you if you arguably have less efficiencies. And uh.
Just food. Yeah, but. Look at, trying, uh, in Mr. Rothmel's argument, uh, help take, ease mind. I was trying to figure out a way to bring people there that might not know the shops are located in Palmyra, but then all of a sudden, they come out to office, go, hey, that's a neat little place right there.
But you know.
Walk over, she's got the sidewalk to walk to.
Yeah, and I I can understand if you're interested in the trick to the um, registrar, just because it's on the main street for for another shop, but I I don't see it for the others.
Everybody, somebody, then most of the buildings there, family comments, there's water, there's somebody else um, next to that.
You know, there's lots of small businesses that are always seeking small rental space, small.
I think that if, when we're looking at this building, we need to be as creative as we possibly can and think deep for future, because when we put the high school over there, if we had a thought about putting a senior center in that high school where those polymer art people and those nurses could have easily have gone down to the senior center and practiced their skill, but we didn't think far enough. Um, so we need to be, look at every possibility and think creatively and think futuristic of what we would think could be there. Um, and and do a good job of putting up the building, so we don't have to worry about later on, one that add on this, wish we had a part about this. And that now, but we've done too much of that in two days. And it has cost us, the middle school, we didn't, we didn't build it big enough, then we have to go back and add to it. Because it's too many children, we've done that.
We had such a growth explosion.
Yeah, the growth and sprawl.
But then, but then turn that around, when we built the high school, we built it for the continual growth and it stopped growing.
Well, they had fifteen hundred and they, you know, but look at all.
We're 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 at fifteen hundred, but that's because we got the eighth grade over there.
Yeah, but but that's.
Yeah, and for the eighth.
But. So Mr. Ryan just brought up a point, we're talking about the housing that we've got coming in right now. Yeah, so we are.
I hope we never.
Growing again.
You know, what it is too, is just, just, you wanna have a one-stop shop, if you wanna come and you wanna go to building inspection, you know, go there, go to building inspection. You have them take something across the hall, make their payment, instead of people having to take payments from here to there, you can deal with, you you have to go with commissioner, you have to go see the registrar, you've got lots of like services in one area, to me, it just makes sense.
I mean, frankly, whether it's twenty three million dollars that we spend, or twenty two million, or twenty one, people are either gonna like the idea uh, or they're not gonna like it. Um, you know, I think when when you look at it and you try to explain it to the public and say, look, this is a negative rate of return. Because we don't do these things today, one day we will do that, it will cost us more money and inflation will have gone up. This is, this is the timing, so this is just a timing move, and um, you know, I I I think a lot of these things are needed. I've had citizens reach out and say, please don't do it, I've had other ones say, please do it, you know, I I think you just, you know, this is, this is ideal timing. Interest rates are gonna go up, inflation's gonna go up. This is the best time to do this, and as soon as we move on it, the better off we are. And I I don't think trying to find, you know, a million dollars here, a million dollars there's gonna change something, I don't say that casually, I just mean that there's a lot that we're trying to accomplish that's listed there, and, you know. Uh, uh, certainly for the efficiencies of the building, you know, uh, of the administration. Trying to trying to say, well, is that building gonna cost us sixteen million instead of sixteen five, does it? You know, we'll we'll get those details figured out, and if we don't use that money, that way we'll use it differently, you know.
Mr. Lee? Well, there's points he made both ways, and I think what he's saying is, is very accurate.
Well, this is where we talked about, before we had had in three and a half billion dollar worth of cash funding for CIP. And we talked about using the cash funding to pay for the first three years.
Yeah.
So that we get to that year three, and we have one point. Yeah, I know y'all got it written at one point six five or something, coming off.
We have that drop.
We have, we have a.
So it picks it up.
Yeah, so so this line, or you get a blue line, that's showing like our our overall debt, and we get some some revenues to offset them. So that's kind of our total debt service number, would that match pretty well then, at the end of those three years?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it it's 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 spot on for about that number right there.
It's actually become a little bit better in three years, the drop's moving, right?
Yeah, because right here, you're at eight point six, eight point three, seven point nine, then you're at six point seven.
On the. I'm talking about what we actually. The three things, you have three things or four things that are coming off in those three years, right there.
Yes.
There you go.
You'll follow away. Yeah, there you go. So you have two forty six dropping off in twenty two, one hundred seventy three thousand dropping off in twenty three, and then one point two million dropping off in twenty four. You add those three amounts all together, it equals like one point six or something like that, and that debt would be carried, and how does that match up with the debt?
It's about.
It's a wash, for how many years?
Well, no, it's uh, it's actually a hundred thousand dollars less.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars less, because it's one six five, is what that equals up to, to one five five or something.
And then, how many years is it going?
So the debt is, well, there there's various.
Some are seven, some are ten, and some are.
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking about when we take the twenty three million or something.
So so just look back to fourth, I'll move it, turn thirty years, twenty years, ten years, and then seven.
Okay.
And you wanna take the longer term if you can.
Low interest rate.
Well, not not, you get the higher the higher interest rate, but.
Get a lower rate, yeah, forty years.
Yeah, but you know, we we just have to match the term, the the term of the debt with useful lives, with useful lives. Our depreciation's terrible.
All of it except for the county admin building comes off. That's the only one that's thirty.
I think it's a good concept.
You you like the concept of it, that was that one five eight? And the other one was one six?
Six something.
Six seven or something like that?
So, Ms. Seager, the net result is that it's tax neutral.
And it's actually gonna be a hundred thousand dollars less in three years. I'm sure we'll find, we'll have other things that we have to spend money on.
Uh, otherwise, we'd be using some monies, because we haven't allocated any monies in the CIPs.
We had, we had three million figure in, but that we, we wouldn't have to spend that, because it's included in that.
That three million will play for three years.
So scroll or I guess a little bit more, that's, uh, you know, go back. So so what we did is for these years, you know, just as a case, you know, we have the the registrar's lease falling off. You know, maintaining buildings with CIP, you know, from the space side, we got amounts, and we we, they're kind of conservative amounts of of what those would be. So, you know, we'll see a reduction in maintenance costs to maintain buildings once you have newer buildings in place. Um, you know, if you sell the buildings, you're gonna have some one-time costs from sale, uh, from selling, whatever buildings you're selling.
Not gonna get that's going on, probably.
You're probably not gonna get a ton, but I mean, if if it, one, if we can get some something back, and if it draws some business to the to the village, that's that's good.
Yeah, maybe we could be the renters' development, out of the commissioner's.
You know, sometimes that's something to be DEA or things like that. So anyway, that's, so, so let's go back over to the debt stuff, please.
And see, we wouldn't be. How long would it take us to get this done and get this ball rolling?
So let's just say, let's just say, you need to be.
Right, you want to get that good interest.
Well, I mean, well, one, if, if you approve it in the budget, you can't technically get moving with it until July one. So July one would be the soonest that you could do anything with this. Well, yeah, well, well. Yeah, we would certainly have things lined up with our financial budget. What, what we're talking about doing here is. You can do all these onesie twosie little financings, a full financing, or you do one giant county bond debt insurance. And you can structure them all just the same within there. So we would probably, um, you know, have, have a county issue with zone bond for that. Um, and with, with the assistance of our financial advisors and. So, you know, we think, we think we'll be able to see better interest rates doing that way too.
Yeah, well, it's good to make that in at those rates because you can see those changes.
Yeah.
So this is, as you said, a worst case scenario. We think a worst case scenario, but.
So, so before we, so again, for the dollar amounts, is there anything that, that you want to see differently?
Does, does the county vehicles include? Because, uh, I know that Mr. Chesser specifically asked about making sure that there's. A vehicle on the CIP for, uh, social services, at least one or two. Is that included in that?
Well. No, I don't think any.
There was one and it was included.
It was, we, we were doing the cash funding portion. It was, I'm sure we could squeeze it.
Maybe, maybe it makes more sense to have like nine buses.
I was gonna say, eight, eight buses.
You know, and then leave two, you know, leave more for county vehicles and obviously I can include this whole bus. I think that, yeah, I think that part makes a little bit of sense.
It is the car for some services.
It was, it was, it was in my budget when I was cash funding it. So in this. No, but if we tweak some things around a little bit, I'm sure we could, I'm sure we can make it squeeze in or something else.
But don't, don't we have ten buses in there when the schools go on purpose? We're not just storing ten buses in, we're doing it because that's to get there.
Right, right, but they're also gonna be returning some money and they can also accept the rights of buses as well too.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not looking.
My, my, my thought, I know you're not looking there, but my thought is, when you buy ten of them, brand new right now, that means.
You're gonna run out.
Twenty years, you gotta buy ten to replace them.
Yeah, I understand that. We talked about that.
Keep in mind that's a huge number. That's why you've heard me talk about, give us the exact number you need. Eighty, okay, and it's every twenty years or eighty-five every twenty years, then we buy four a year or five a year.
So if we use the net rest now, which makes sense, why would we put in ten buses?
You don't have to spend it all the same as for you. You're not gonna spend it all the same.
No, well, I mean, un, un, we could.
But you don't have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so that means you don't have to.
And one thing about it is we'll be able to try and just it into an interest bearing account somewhere.
Well, I mean, so anytime you have these initial interest bearing accounts, so whatever you have outstanding, you're gonna get an interest out of it. Um, no, no, generally when you take out certain bonds, you generally want to, uh, spend it down. Usually there's a spend down period that you have, usually three to five years at most.
So we said that some of the services park is in here and there's not gonna.
So, no.
Just change that to three hundred twenty thousand.
But three, three hundred twenty-five thousand is the.
I was gonna say, five to six vehicles for three hundred thousand dollars, that's.
But that's mostly, that's mostly, so for a lot of the public utilities and for a lot of public works vehicles. Some of the trucks are very old and outdated, and so, so, some trucks are definitely needed in.
I know we bought a lot of trucks when I first came on the board in two thousand.
So we, the, um.
We bought a lot of them back then, because we.
We got some, we got some vans.
Two thousand and twelve or thirteen, no, thirteen.
Mr. Heffernan, how many newer trucks do you have right now?
We haven't purchased any new trucks since one of the last two.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We bought a lot of them back in two thousand and twelve. This is that, getting close to that end.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if you look down at, you know, you look at the building inspections trucks, you look at public utilities trucks, I mean, there's. You know, pub, public utility trucks, I mean, they're driving around some old vehicles. You look at building inspection trucks, they're driving around in some two thousand and nine, I think, uh, smaller Chevy Colorados. So, I mean, we can, you know, we can make that probably go further, but that was just the estimate.
Do, do, in advertising this, do we have to specify? Can we just say, school buses and vehicles and a lot of that number?
There's gonna be certain groups that want to look for each.
Yeah.
Individual.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, people are gonna say, oh, they're okay, they're taking care of food. Well, I mean, fire rescue's got a lump in there.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah, I think breaking it down. And do we have wiggle room if we break it down that way? Or we have to spend it specifically?
No, just in terms of if we're advertising this, you know, in other words, you're gonna be saying.
In the aver, in the big advertisement, it breaks it out by the different parts.
But it doesn't break it out by.
It's fund balance appropriation, grants and proceeds from indebtedness, a total number.
Proceeds from indebtedness would be twenty-three million or whatever. You don't have to break it down.
Yeah, so, so no, I mean, so right now.
What is the question?
That's the giant, uh, it's a giant. Housing all, all, all county equipment, whether it's tractors, backhoes, um, in the. It would be located down behind here, this is, is the plan.
Oh, okay.
Next to the grove.
I think the only other thing I would add, I mean, I think it's great, but I do think that. Um, and I know we've got lots of rationale with recovery, you know, buildings and, and what we should do and talking about that internally. In our meetings, but, you know, certainly the public's gonna have a lot of questions about this. And we want to make sure that we're, you know, we do a great job when we promote the public experience and advertise. Kind of, yeah, make sure we do the interviews accordingly so that people understand.
I got, I got, we had a fire call, I bet. Crawl for a twenty-two million dollar public or county administration building. That's just part of it. His, his is seven, eight, nine different things that we're doing.
So, so what I would probably do is, is, is so if someone doesn't think that, oh, county administrator wants a sixty million. I'll probably break out more specificity. Here's a, here's the county admin building, here's DSS. Here's what it's gonna cost to renovate DS, the old DSS and renovate.
Yeah, exactly. That's all I'm saying. We know that this is the right thing to do.
And Mr. Weaver just brought up a great point. Oh, and by the way, it's not gonna increase your tax.
Yeah.
We're doing this without.
This is a great budget. This is a fantastic.
Now, Paul, well, the next thing I'm gonna say is, Miss May, didn't you say that the social services was gonna be helping us out some of it? Or the social services is gonna be part of it? We don't know how much. Oh, we do.
Yeah, so, so, um, Ms. Twisdale and, and Ms. May and myself and the director of the state's open services.
It was the regional administrative manager for city services.
Yeah, so, so the way it works for. They, they will reimburse your debt. They weren't hoping to pay for the upfront capital, but what they will do. They will reimburse your debt service amount. So let's just say that you have a debt service. But for, let's give you the number, say, but there, say the social services portion of that service is a hundred thousand dollars. They would contribute yours.
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah, so we would get a thirty-five percent mass hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, eighty-five percent. I like eighty-five percent.
But they do this appreciate, straight line depreciation, so you don't get it all at once.
You don't get it all at once.
Over how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty years.
It's probably gonna be a minimum thirty, maybe forty, so maybe it's fifty thousand dollars a year offset.
Well, that's okay. It's still fifty thousand a year offset. And if you do fifty thousand times four, it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
We better spend the night.
Is the building assuming? Is there, is there any, are, are we talking about connecting to the school, new school, admin, school?
So that's not in this.
That's a plan B. I mean, that's our, down the road.
That's a down the road.
Will be designed with the idea of creating an act.
This, this would have, and like I said, you know, this number, this, this number is from the space utilization study from about a year and a half ago. So. You know, we could plus it up, but I mean, you know, we don't know when it's gonna be a hundred percent. We hope it's gonna be right in this area and, and, and it should be. But, um, so no, that would have, you'd have a, like a, a board area or auditorium or some type of board room. And then, then you could add a school board office at a later point, right on, right on the edge of that.
As at one county where the admin building was here, school building was here, and the connector was.
And the schools aren't particularly interested, um, in doing this right now.
They weren't interested in doing what?
They weren't interested in, in building, building with us at this time.
All right, I'm gonna bring up one thing, and y'all can tell me if I'm crazy.
Mr. Winkler can chime in if you want. Mr. Winkler.
Yeah, no, I'm on. What, what, I, I didn't hear the, what, what's the question, Mr. Doll?
Well, no, we were talking about, we had talked about a, a kind of combined school board office, county admin building over at Pleasant Grove. And we were just saying that, that you all did not have a lot of interest when we were talking about it before.
That, that, that is correct. Um, I would have said ten years ago under the domino, domino plan, that would have fit right in. But we have since, uh, um, through your good graces, been able to transform the Palmyra Elementary School. Um, for far less than what we asked for ten years ago within the domino plan. Um, into a very effective, productive, um, I would say, school board office. I mean, obviously, there's a few other things that we want to do. Um, but I think that, that building, um, well serves its use for what, for what we need right now. I mean, the old auditorium, if you will, is a good board meeting room. Um, we've put new windows, we've got new doors, we've got just new security features. We just put a seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, whole building generator in, in the room. Uh, we redid the flooring in there. It's, it's a, it's a good usable building. Um, we, we'd obviously like to do a few other things to move forward with it, but, um. I, I don't see a need to move the school's administrative office at this particular time. And that's just coming from me. I believe my general administration would, would, would agree with that.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
The only, well, the only thing I was thinking, this is something, and I'm there every day, and I kind of brought this up before. We've got issues with the track down at the middle school. It's just got aged. Uh, told you that the drain that was built on it. Forty-five years ago is now clogged up, and if it rains, we have a moat around the castle. Uh. My thought was this, our, our citizens really don't have, they got Pleasant Grove or, or, if they want to walk laps. If we could repair that track and even have it opened up, make a deal with the schools where it's opened up. That if citizens want to go out there after school hours, they're free to go out there and walk on the track. Uh, I don't know how much that would cost, but I think we could also help out the school system. Because the track's a forty-five year old track. And they did some stuff with that and kind of turned those a bit more of a recess area instead of just true tennis courts. Uh, so, but the, we got, and the tennis courts at the high school were left open. So if somebody wants to play tennis, there's six tennis courts up there that are brand spanking new, or not new anymore, but they're good.
Are they used?
Yes, sir. There, there are. When I'm over there in the summertime, whether it's baseball, football, or just doing behind the wheel. There are, most times when I go through there, there's somebody, whether it's early in the morning, late in the evening, playing tennis. I have no idea. I don't drive. Okay, but they play up here a lot. I just, if we had the opportunity to do that, if we could fix that trap. Um, I don't know how much it costs, but put that into this project and, you know. Mr. Winkler, are you there by chance? We've gotten back on it.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, I, I'm still here. We priced, and I'm sorry, Mr. Sheridan, I don't, I don't recall what the price was to redo that track. Several years ago, um, one of our wonderful track coaches has gone over there and shored up some of the issues that we had about four or five years ago. Uh, but it really needs completely, uh, redone. Um, I, I would, I would be hesitant to, to, to throw a figure out, but I would be all in favor of completely redoing it, getting some figures. Um, and opening it up more from a community standpoint, and obviously it would further help us as well, um, from a middle school track standpoint. Um, there, that particular area, whether it's the track, the, the field facilities over there that we could, we could open it up more from Parks and Rec standpoint. Uh, could highly use, um, um, some services, if you will.
We, we just didn't consider it because it wasn't even on the five-year CIP, so.
I, I know it's not, but right now, it's one of the things that I didn't talk about, and Mr. Winkler, and I apologize for not contacting you, Mr. Winkler. Probably should just called you up and talked to you about it. But, um, roots are growing under the track down on the far corner.
Yes.
For eight, you got the Humpty Bumpies. So you can't, you can't use those during tracking. Yes, they'd be miniature hurdles. Uh, so, you know, some kid be running along, all of a sudden hit that, and it's not gonna end well.
And it's a shame that allowing to continue to get carried.
And, and, and I know that I teach there, and I'm not just doing this trying to get, because that's where I teach, because. That will probably not be done before I'm done teaching. Um, it won't affect me.
Well, I guess my question to Mr. Winkler is, are, are, is the Abrams estimate or the Terry's estimate is, are those high? Are those good estimates? Is there, because I have no idea.
Is there a spot? Well, I was gonna say, if we could go to eight instead of the ten buses?
Right, I mean, I think you could put a line item that says, school facilities, you know.
Mr. Weaver, what, what do you think about my idea?
We just keep finding things to add on, you know, that's.
Yes, sir.
He's, he's reducing it, actually.
Well, you have it some. In the future anyway.
I just, uh, I, I really, to put ten in one line, one year, I'm not a big fan of.
I understand that.
Then we come back in twenty years.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about when, like, um, when, when we really need to look at the list clearly. Because what you're talking about, that's, that's something that we could do now rather than wait and try to totally.
This one's got, this one, this, this one probably just needs people to plug.
Yeah.
This, this, this school, I mean, so, I just asked the question, how do we have to advertise this present year? I mean, I think we can have school field, county recreation, other line, subtract two buses, put it in there. And, you know, when, when it comes down to figuring out what should, should be there, we can make that happen. I mean, for us to discuss line items.
No, the wireline, we don't necessarily need to add. Because, because the total is gonna be, it's gonna be.
It's, it, it is a really nice track. I don't know, uh, state service, well, it's got rubber on top of asphalt.
All right.
And the rubber is starting to peel off, and the track coaches have worked really hard to come in here and patch it, but you can tell everywhere that they patched. And, uh, you know, it's gotta be painted.
With, towards the patching.
Yeah, how much it costs to fix it out?
Oh. That, that would be something that they'd have to ask Mister Weaver.
So, so Mister Chair, and Mister Weaver, uh, Mister Weaver. Yes, uh, here. Yeah, just, just wanted to make sure you could. Uh, that, that, we don't, when we're advertising this, I mean, there's gonna be changes. We don't know that the Abrams is gonna be this. And so there's some room for us to do that and do some of these other things, and so if we need to line item something, again, I just go back to the suggestion of can't do two buses and put a line item, it's kind of, you know, presses that, and, and, and I think we're.
Two hundred, two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
That would be under the, just a length to use.
We're at that, we're, we're sub one hundred thousand in terms of.
And we're after dinner time, so Mister Weaver already pointed that out.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're sub one hundred thousand in terms of the, of the, of keeping it, you know, below the, the, the debt schedule in terms of what it turns out. So, this is a, you know, this is just kind of a number right here. Um, and it can be timed out. You know, if, if we have agreement, I think we should say, yes, let's do this.
That's right.
All right, Mister Eager.
John, your question was, uh, oh, I just wanted to revisit the, uh, one of the recommendations, um, that the fire chiefs made to you folks last week, and in regards to the tower ladder replacement, which is on the schedule for two years from now, and that's gonna be a very large ticket item. Um, just remind you, they suggested purchasing that now, moving the current, current tower ladder to reserve status due to its age, now to extend its life, and while money's cheap, this might be, they suggest that you might wanna think about purchasing it now because if it's one point five or one point six million now, you're looking at one point seven five to one point eight million two years from now. It'll save you two to three hundred dollars to buy it now, like, two years, and we know it's coming up. So they, that was their suggestion, so I just wanted to remind you of that suggestion.
Mister Wild, so they're, they said one, one of the chiefs said one point three, so what's the difference between one point three and one point six?
It's, it's all an estimate at this point. Um, we don't have folks on any of that. So their estimate versus our estimate, it's, you know, we're, we're throwing numbers out there at this point, it's just an estimate. We might come in a little less than that if we're lucky, but, but the point is that it's gonna cost you significantly more two years from now because what we've been seeing is, is costs going up four to five percent per year for emergency apparatus, so. When you do that for two more years, it's five percent a year, you're looking at on the order of two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars.
If you make it two million, what does that change your debt to? At one point seven five, you make it two point five or something like that?
What he's saying is make it. Well, the, the, the chiefs one, one chief was here, he said one point three million for a ladder.
There would be three point one, three point two.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Put that in your, your payment's gonna be, go ahead and put it in, but your debt's probably gonna be about one six, one seven, one seven maybe?
Yes, we had a hundred thousand plus though, cause then we would say, so we might be just burning that one hundred thousand. This will be my guess.
One seven three eight versus?
Five hundred four.
One five eight four, so that's right, right, right in there.
It's only gonna be about a fifty thousand dollar difference from the other payment that's in, we take off the, when we added, we didn't add in the registrar's office, fifty thousand dollars a year.
Ran it up to twenty-five?
Yeah, well, if you have one point three million dollars for ladder trucks.
Well, you could reduce your buses.
You can reduce your buses and get back down to twenty-five.
Well, you can reduce a lot of things, get a hundred twenty back.
You can.
Why do we want to reduce the buses too?
Yeah, there, cause there's big items.
Well, but it, but, anyway.
They don't last out in the same year.
I, I'm just going back to the one point six, whatever it was, we didn't have, we didn't add in the forty-four thousand or whatever it is with payments registrar.
Yeah, and, and, and some of these numbers are, are gonna change, so I mean.
Then you're, you're at one point seven.
Now, how's that twenty-five gonna fit in now?
Well, one, one, one point seven. Well, it's, it'll be about thirty-eight thousand, huh?
Thirty-eight thousand behind.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand behind.
A quarter of a thousand.
So we'll have, add that to forty thousand.
In three years, in three years.
Yeah.
Three years. I, I think that'll wash itself out, cause we, we, these are not final interest rate numbers. These are not final numbers for the actual cost.
Yeah, we need. Man, I mean, if, if you bring these rights, if you bring these rights down to where they currently are, and I know they're not gonna be that, but I thought we'd do one, I thought it was by a couple hundred thousand a year.
So if you change it to two point, I mean, just change the, the county admin building, building to three instead of two point four, that'll change that number right away, so.
Yeah.
You don't realize how fast things going up, to give you an example, and it's, it's a bad example. But I bought a bag of oranges for five dollars and a half. So I went back two weeks later and it was seven dollars and a half. In two weeks, that bag of oranges, same thing, same size, unbelievable, and, and that's what's gonna happen with all this money floating around, and it is floating around.
It's just.
So we just put in like twenty-five million?
Yeah, I think, the, the point is, we're trying to advertise for a hundred twenty-five million dollars. I think that's something.
That sounds good, that's, that's fun, man.
Yep, but, you know, going, going back to it, we also know, Mister Weaver, I know it'll be a long time, we won't see the end of it, but the two million, it's probably gonna be about roughly two million coming from whoever's paying us for the social services.
Yeah.
So we get two million back over time.
You think we get two million, oh, yeah. Oh, no, we're talking about.
How much?
Is that, that service reimbursement?
Fifty grand over thirty.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, still, we can add that.
Well, they, they appreciate it, so they, the social services spreads it out over forty.
Tim Harrington presentation, what he designed for the admin building, that's, that was just a design figure.
Okay.
Yeah, and they get, they get to choose, spread that two million out over forty years.
So we back to the tracks.
No, 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 we're not talking track, we're not doing that, we're, we're, we're gonna close this meeting. That twenty-five million, and we don't believe.
No, no, we can still do that.
Okay, good.
All right, all right, all right. Where, where, Mister Weaver, you said you was good at twenty-five.
Yeah.
Did, did, did you have twenty-five? Is he, is he, Mr. Booker? Okay, I'll wait for this big, this Booker goes, no, I need fifty.
I think this is a huge win for the county.
Uh, when I explained it to somebody, the first another day that jumped me, by the time, we're gonna get all of that? And you're saying it's not gonna cost, we're not gonna go up? All right.
Before we adjourn, so that I make sure I know that I'm putting together the right ad.
Two hundred and fifty million.
Two hundred and fifty. Twenty-five million debt service or CIP, a tax rate of eighty-eight four, and a personal property of four thirty-five. That's what we're gonna advertise, and we are good with everything that's in here.
Yep.
And the difference being in the VLS contingency.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I've got everything right before I come back to you on the ad and it's all wrong.
There's nothing, cigarettes, none of that, so.
Yeah.
And Martridge, all right, Mister O'Brien.
Mister Chair, I know the Savannah County Board of Supervisors entered to close me pursuant to provisions. On, um, section two dot two dot three seven eleven eight one, section two dot two dot three seven eleven eight five, section two dot two dot three seven eleven eight six, section two dot two dot three seven eleven eight, eighth of the code of Virginia, nineteen fifty as a penalty for purposes of discussing personnel perspective, industry, investment, funds, uh, and legal matters.
I have a second. Motion's made by Mister O'Brien, second by Mister Booker, Miss Eager, Mister Booker, Mister O'Brien. Chair, both eyes, we're now in full session, please. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I know, video's still up. I have our video still open.
Oh, okay.
Let's do that.
Hey, ready?
There you go.
I'll go on top of something. You would say about? First time ever. We ready to go? Mr. O'Brien, this is Chair of the Savannah County Board of Supervisors recess. Okay, we got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker, Ms. Eager.
Hi.
Ms. Booker. Mr. O'Brien.
Hi.
Mr. Weaver. Chair votes are, we are now out of the floor session. I call for one of the regular meeting of the Savannah County Board of Supervisors, who will begin with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the liberty, justice, and all. Thank you very much. All righty, do we have an adoption of the agenda? Hold on before I do that, Mr. Doll, we don't have any, okay, just checking. All right, do I have a second? Got a motion made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Ms. Eager. Oh, hang on, I'm just the. It's been so long since we've had all five of us.
Rules here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes are, since we're virtual, Mr. Bane, do I have to go roll call for those that are virtual?
Oh, no, I don't think so. The record needs to show how each member.
There was five zero. Okay, we have an adoption of agenda, and now, Mr. Doll.
Just a couple things report, Mr. Chair members of the board. So again, as we've been always kind of informing you all, we have another Blue Ridge Health District drive-through COVID testing clinic for anyone in the community over age sixteen. Again, it's going to be Wednesday, March thirty first, from three PM to seven PM at the Savannah Kelly High School bus loop. Again, it's a free drive-through and walk-up COVID testing. You can call, you can come the day of, or you can call the two days prior to guarantee a test. Also regarding vaccines. So regarding COVID vaccination in the Blue Ridge Health District, one, you know, the one thing that we wanted to make sure that people are doing is registering to get your vaccinations. And pre-registering through vaccinate.virginia.gov or calling the pre-registration vaccination hotline at eight seven seven eight two nine four six eight two. You know, the Blue Ridge Health District is starting to get more, more vaccination, more vaccines available to, for Savannah and for the area. And, you know, we're starting to get a few more pop-ups coming about. You know, one thing that we've set in place is on Fridays at the Carriesburg Gym through May, Blue Ridge Health District is holding vaccine clinics there. And that's for Savannah residents. We also are getting notifications periodically at some pop-up clinics that are coming about. I know that there is one coming up recent, coming up soon regarding the Johnson and Johnson, one dose vaccination. You know, Jefferson Pharmacy, they're going to, they're also going to be administering the vaccines and vaccinations through the Lake Maricello Firehouse. Then CBS has availability. You know, so if it's one thing that we can do is to urge the public to get on the registration list because, you know, the thing that we are being held up by are the vaccines themselves. And the more people that get on the list as vaccines come available, they're, they're starting to ramp up and get those, getting these clinics moving through a little bit better.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Sure.
Carriesburg Friday, you may look for time.
Oh, sorry, yeah, so, so generally, I think they're talking about doing from nine AM like they did at the high school, they're doing nine AM until three PM.
These are not walk-ins.
No, these are not walk-ins. You have to appointment only, you have to pre-register through vaccinate.virginia.gov or call the one eight hundred number.
Are they still vaccinating sixty-five plus? Are we still there and the sixteen people who have underlying conditions?
So this week is sixty-five plus, so, so everybody who qualifies for one A, one B essential workers and people over sixty-five, starting Monday. It will be sixteen to sixty-four with the underlying health conditions or high risks. So that will start Monday.
So that's real, that's important to know, CBS, are they only estimating sixty-five plus?
CBS will only, only be doing sixty-five plus even when the district moves into the sixteen sixty-four, CBS will not be. And the other important thing about CBS is that is an independent registration, it does not run through the Vaccinate Virginia.
And that's a tab or death penalty on Wednesday?
That's a good question, let me see if I can find that while we're sitting.
I saw Walmart.
Yeah, they have too.
Yeah, like I said, we were just pulling up ones that were specific in Savannah County, but yeah, I know Walmart, yeah, Walmart does, I don't know that information.
Everything is by appointment.
So like I said, the most important thing is register, register, register. So, so just kind of looking at, at the vaccines given in the county. So the residents that have received one COVID vaccine dose, that's six thousand nine hundred ninety-five, that's thirty-two percent of, based upon twenty nineteen estimated to then a population for residents over the age of eighteen. And for residents who receive two-plus COVID vaccine doses, that's at nineteen point seven percent.
Jefferson Pharmacy, they don't have their times listed in their announcement.
Okay.
They don't know, it just says by appointment only made through the Blue Ridge Health District of the Virginia Department of Health, they don't have their times listed.
So we can.
Yeah, we can, what we'll do is we'll try and get this information out of, I'll, I'll, can we coordinate with them so we can make sure we get some stuff on our page to kind of put the information out to the public about the opportunities? And then, oh yeah. So again, talking about pre-register now, so beginning March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, Blue Ridge Health District is returning to their VAM registration system, which they, which they left before.
Engaged it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so beginning the week of March twenty-second, there will, there will be eleven thousand six hundred fifty vaccine doses for the health district, fifty-eight hundred for Moderna Advisor, two thousand for Johnson and Johnson.
Fifty-eight hundred first doses.
First doses, I'm sorry, yeah, correct. And again, continuing with phase one A essential workers, one B essential workers, and, you know, adding phase one A essential workers with individuals sixteen and sixty-four years of underlying health conditions.
There, you have to register through the VAMs, obviously.
Yes, and, 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 you know, again, so Kelly, you know the vaccinate.virginia.gov, how does that, I mean, does it still bring you through the VAMs or?
So they, the Blue Ridge Health District had a press conference today that I, I love them to be finding. You'll still have to do pre-registration to vaccinate Virginia. And after you're pre-register, Blue Ridge will get all of the information for their local, for their district, for all of the localities within that. They dump it into VAMs, VAMs will send the email, so it will come in from the CDC. It's like when we got it, it just says CDC, like, that's, you know, at the top, so be careful looking at VAM holders for that. But the, it will come from the CDC, but first is the pre-registration, then Blue Ridge will put the information in the VAMs, and VAMs will send the email to the individuals to schedule their appointments.
Hopefully that's a random email account.
Yes, that was, that was a little odd, yes, I would agree.
And the problem that you have to be aware of, that we need to get to the underserved area, not to move vaccines out there, but to get people registered. And so it's a group of people really working very hard to try to get to the underserved people.
Yeah, if, if, if we could get the groups to get to, get the community register, that, that is, that is the key, get them in the queue. And then spotlight on business, BSI, BSI Hardware and Country Store located in Fort Union in the previous IGA building. They are going to have a selection of electrical, plumbing, fasteners, produce, milk, bread, snacks, candy, pet food. The deli opened in March, serving chicken salad, Cajun crab dip, artichoke dip, all sorts of goodies. And it's, it's considered a unique country store with a down home good flavor, so again, that opened up in Fort Union in the old IGA building. And just some up and coming meetings we have. So one, we have a budget work session for next, scheduled for next Wednesday at the twenty-fourth, at seven PM. On April seventh, we have a four PM regular meeting, and then on April seventh, at seven PM, we have a budget work session to be determined, so.
On the twenty-fourth, there to be determined also?
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess it could, you know, the only, if, if we're, I guess if we're lack the loaded on the budget, it could be.
I'm just, you know.
Yeah. So that would be something we would need to know. So that would be something we would need to know, what we would need to know today if the board doesn't want an electric work session next Wednesday.
Unless more information's coming in.
Yeah, that's sound, we would need one.
Speaking of that, and I'm going to share it with you too. I was sitting here looking at the numbers on our little sheet here.
Yep.
Everybody, we talked about one point six million? Or, yeah, one point six five comes off, Ms. Twisdale. You're going to like this. Look down at the school debt service numbers. We're also going to get one point seven five, or a hundred and seventy-five thousand more of what we paid to the schools in twenty-four. So if you add that number to those others, the three numbers, we'll be replacing one point eight five. Oh yeah, I got to thank you that, don't I, Mr. Dahl? Hey, this little sheet right here. What we're paying on our schools goes from four point nine five to four point seven three.
Oh yes, in twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes.
That's two hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it, and that's...
That's another two hundred thousand, that's, that's one point eight five that comes off, and we're replacing it with one point six or one point seven.
Yeah, and the reason for that is when we did the VPSA...
Correct.
...body funding, that's, that's the rebate. We had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar a year rebate for twenty-two and twenty-three, and it goes up to three hundred and forty thousand in twenty-four.
That's, that's what I'm saying, we're getting an extra...
Oh, sorry. Could we reverse the Wednesday meeting?
Yeah, oh yeah, you, yeah, you certainly can. You can, you can cancel next weekend and then do the one on the seventh if you want.
Well, one thing is if we do the budget work session in advance, or, you know, in other words, switch to the regular, the seventh.
You can't do that.
No, that's, that's separate from any of those presentations.
Or do a three, you know, maybe a three o'clock meeting on, on the seventh. That's not at all.
No.
No, I can't.
Come on.
I'll be on the bus. Hold on, not that week, it's spring break. I'll be in the driver's.
And then, and so then after that, just, just, just to give you some more upcoming meetings, on April, April fourteenth, and then we have the public hearings for the budget. On April twenty-first is when we have our regular meeting, and we adopt FY twenty-two budget. And I'm going to tell you right now, right now, for the April twenty-first meeting, the regular meeting, we have a lot of stuff. We have four public hearings coming for planning. We have a couple of the public hearings as well, so.
My birthday party.
There you go.
Now that he's told you the bad news, the good news is that those four public hearings were relatively, they were relatively not just planning, they were...
Okay.
But it is, it's, it's good stuff, good stuff.
Well, there may be people here talking about the budget.
Yes.
But going back to the budget thing right there, I mean, yes, we may tweak, we may do some stuff here and there, but if we were only going to do little stuff, not major stuff, we can do that on the seventh.
Yeah.
Instead of the twenty-fourth. We don't need the twenty-fourth, and we can do it afterwards because we're not going to finalize it until the twenty-first. So if we need a budget work session, unless we think we're going to have something...
I've already scratched.
So we can just, we don't need next Wednesday.
So, so to say that, this, this will be Ms. Twisdale's last board meeting then, since her last phase was March thirtieth?
That's why I'm saying that, oh.
Oh.
Why wouldn't you be hanging out at the beach?
Put it in your chat.
I'm telling you, Ms. Twisdale, if I get a picture during a board meeting, if you sit there taking a picture, sitting on a beach smiling at me, I'll find you on Thursday.
Okay, so, so we're...
I hope so.
Okay, so we're going to cancel next week on the twenty-fourth and keep the budget work session on April seventh.
If, if needed, you know, I mean, we may end up canceling that one if we need to. If we don't need to, we got it, we got that one in our back pocket.
Okay. All right. And that is it, that's all I have. Seven, seven.
Yes, sir. And, and, and the seven PM is if needed, if we have something come up, we got to go back and look at...
So, so we might not have any meeting, right?
If, if we think we're where we want to be, then...
Can I make a suggestion maybe? And this is, you know, unless we have a really full April seventh meeting, what we could also say, Tyler...
Just pick that up right as...
You could, you could pick it up, pick up a work session immediately following the regular meeting.
Just transfer right into it. If needed, like I said, if needed, it's an item on the regular...
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good, all right, oh, good. All right, I will now open up, this is the first round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board, please state your name and address. Keep your comments five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board at this time?
I would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address.
My name is Linda Stager. My address is twenty-nine forty-nine Ridge Road, Palmyra. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for allowing me to speak. I first would like to just lay out concerns about the housing development, specifically rural clusters. And then I would like to focus on the question of whether we must comply. I sent letters around, but I'm going to review that information. As you know, the Code of Virginia requires that counties allow rural cluster subdivisions in residential and agricultural regions up to forty percent of the area of the county designated. And were that actually to happen at forty percent, it would be a huge change and a huge challenge to our county. I know the, that development has been a subject for a very long time here. And as recently as the newest survey that was administered and compiled by Ms. Harris, there are comments, many comments, on the extent to which housing development is occurring, should occur, should not, not occur. And on reviewing the comments, it seems that many people who participated in that survey from all districts in the county were concerned about the pace of development. That, that has a significant impact on the fiscal health of our county inasmuch as the great burden of taxation has fallen on the individual landowners. And there is a squeeze between the amount that citizens want to pay in taxes compared to the amount needed to pay for services like education, governance, managing finances, promoting health and safety, et cetera. Now, I know we do have a big emphasis on recruiting businesses to help share that tax burden. And I understand that people have to have a place to live. But if they have a place to live in our county, but there's no work, they'll work elsewhere, they'll earn money elsewhere, they'll spend it elsewhere, but they'll still need services here in our county. So we have had some recent heartaches of citizens by having to comply with the rural cluster subdivision law. We do have a plan for growth, and we should be able just to follow the plan for growth that suits us, that suits our county and the character of our county. As you may also be aware, the Code of Virginia section requires counties comply with, in a way that can result in these undesirable outcomes. But it only applies if the county growth rate is ten percent or more from one census to the next. So we don't have census results, and we probably won't get them until September. The last I checked, the Census Bureau. We have an estimate that Ms. Harris did based on the recent survey that estimates the growth at ten point five percent. But she based that estimate on a full year of housing for twenty twenty and not just the first quarter. So when I look back at the growth rate over the ten years, if you just prorate it to the first quarter of the, of twenty twenty, the growth rate is less than ten percent. So the main point that I want to make is it's very, very possible that our growth rate in the county is less than ten percent from one census to the next. And in that case, we are not required to comply with the state law about rural subdivisions. So it's my belief that we won't have to do that. And what I'm asking tonight is if we can do some kind of moratorium on receiving new requests for cluster subdivisions until the census is available. So if the census comes available in September and it says our growth is more than ten percent, then we'll have to comply. But if it isn't, then we won't. And we'll have a, another period where we can plan for more reasonable growth in areas of the county where we have infrastructure to support it. So I don't know how to move forward with this idea. I don't know if you can say, well, we're going to vote on it tonight and we're not going to do it. I don't know what Mr. Payne's advice would be to the board about whether it's even possible for us to do it. I don't know if you want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, if you want me to bring petitions, if you want me to bring citizens, other citizens to speak. But I did want to bring it up as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Stager. We appreciate you speaking tonight, ma'am. Okay. Is there anyone else need speaking of a public comment? No one else? Thank, and thank y'all for coming up. And I'll now close the first round of public comment. There are no public hearings. Next up is Action Matter A, audio upgrades for the library. Ms. Twisdale. We're going to get the use out of you if this is your last...
So last week, Mr. Dahl spoke to you about the library audio system. And as we have heard from members of the staff in the planning, they have a hard time here on meetings. So this is that, really just the official request to set aside the funding for the library audio system to upgrade the sound system here.
That will travel with us.
Yes, and it will...
When we have a new place to go, and you have...
Yeah, we'll use Carers fundings.
Yeah.
Speakers will be in ceiling. We're not definitely going to take speakers on the ceiling, but, but anything else could go.
And Carers fund... All righty, are there any questions or comments?
Can I make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move the board to supervise and approve the budget transfer of up to thirteen thousand from the care that continues to budget to the cares PDP equipment budget for upgrades to the audio system at the library.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Ms. Eager and second by Ms. Booker. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Next up, B, Historic Courthouse Historic Structures Report, Ms. Twisdale.
As Mr. Hickman talked to the board a couple of weeks ago, we are interested in having a historic courthouse structure report done. This will give us the opportunity for some grant funding. And part of the historical society is offered to put part of that in. And this is just the formal motion to request the funding for that as well as the supplemental preparation from the society that they're part of.
Any questions for anyone? Do I have a motion number one?
I move the board to supervise and approve the use of twenty thousand dollars from the historic courthouse CFP funds to pay for the services of a qualified architectural firm to provide a historic structures report to the Fluvana County Historic Courthouse.
Motion made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Eager. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. How about motion number two?
I move the board to supervise and approve the supplementary acceleration of ten thousand dollars from the Fluvana County Historical Society to the Historic Courthouse CFP project to assist with funding for a historic structures report.
Motion's made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Mr. Weaver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We'll now move forward with C.
All right, so let me, let me do a back, just pull up...
Oh, yeah, we got to put the numbers up.
Well, yeah, I think I can just... Turn it over. Yeah. It was sent via U.S. Mission.
It's going to be all through the, it should be in the U.S. Mission. This pushing line technology spells tonight.
So let's do this, just, so let's read from here, since this is, this is really what the board's approving.
That's what we came up with.
So this is the, to advertise the budget and the tax rate, the maximum tax rate and the maximum budget, and the review the next two weeks for the public hearing on April the... Twenty-seven, no.
But what are we talking about?
Wednesday, April the fourteenth will be the public hearing.
Sir? Yes, sir. Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
It's one point nine under...
It's a total budget. Sorry, we'll just organize, total budget of one hundred and nine million, seven eighty, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars.
And normally our overall combined budget is usually around the seventy-five, eighty, thirty range, but since we added the twenty-five million in there, that's why it's significantly larger than...
And it is, and I ran the numbers three times, it kind of shocked me, but with adding the twenty-five million in there, it does get a little over a thirty-seven percent increase over last year's budget.
And so that, so that is going to be, so just to kind of...
It's the other work document.
This one?
It's the work document.
What's that?
It's the other work document. And this is the actual ad that will go in the paper.
Yep.
So this has what the total proposed budget amount is, what the rates are for property taxes, real estate, all the various taxes, and then shows the increase of what, over last year.
But it has no explanation.
No, and I'll show you the next document, because that, because that's the big full page document that breaks it out.
Okay. And that'll be the self-document.
Yep.
And this, this document runs as a full page. The other runs as a quarter page.
So what it does, it combines the current adopted budget versus the proposed budget. It shows the increase, decrease in revenue, potential percentages, shows increase, decrease of expenditures and, and all that. And then down here, you can see that we have a twenty-two thousand percent increase in capital funds. That's the, you know, the public will be able to see that there's been a major capital increase.
That can't be put in, in the actual quarter page statement as if just a citation.
Yeah, the ad is generally pretty, it's pretty basic, and it's standard for what pushes down from the Code of Virginia for what, how we're supposed to advertise things. The only thing we could do, we might be able to just see that, I don't think so, but we'll see if there's anything that we can do to maybe better clarify, but...
I will have to, I have to submit this first thing in the morning. They're holding, they hold a review for us for this ad.
Anyway, I mean, if, if the board does it, I mean, tonight you're approving just the overall budget, and then we'll, I'm not saying we can or we can't, we'll, we'll have to see what we can or cannot do.
We'll look at that. Still have a review, you know, have a report, right? If still have a review, we'll put a report in.
Yeah, they, they...
And they will probably summarize, right?
Yeah, they, they usually will, and I'm not sure if, if any of the reporters from today or review are listening, you know, that they usually put in there what, what actions the board took. And I think if there was a twenty-five million potential debt service thing, that, that may be reported for what it's for, so.
But we can probably keep a line in there explaining.
So anyway, so this is the motion. So anyway, so this is the motion right there for the board for the, uh, to advertise the budget tax rates and, and capital improvement program.
Alrighty, are there any questions? We have a motion. I move the Board of Supervisors authorize staff to advertise the FY twenty-two budgets, tax rates, and capital improvement plan for a public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Supposed budget amount for FY twenty-two is one hundred nine, seven hundred and eighty-nine, four hundred and eleven million dollars. The advertised tax rates are as follows. Real property, point eight-eight four per one hundred. Mobile homes, point eight-eight four dollars per one hundred. Personal property, four dollars and thirty-five cents per one hundred. Personal property, business and public, two dollars and ninety cents per one hundred. Machinery and tools, dollar ninety per one hundred. One eighty-four, eighty-eight. Sorry, we got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero.
Yay.
We ain't there yet. We like those, you know, we bet. I mean, like I said, you know, some folks won't understand what all that says, but.
This is a quick presentation.
And D. Next up is D, Post punishment of penalty and interest on the first half taxes of twenty twenty-one, Mr. Doll.
So the board discussed last time, we've done this two times already for, for delaying with penalties and interests, uh, start accruing for, for taxes. Again, we're doing the same thing that we did back in December and then the previous, yeah, June. Again, it's, it's a temporary ordinance to meant to ease financial burden. It's temporary and this is only for the first half twenty twenty-one taxes. It extends the time at which penalty interest will be imposed until June thirtieth, but not beyond. And, and that's the big thing. Like I said, nothing, nothing major change from, from the previous two times that the board approved this. And again, it, it is temporary nature.
Alrighty, let me ask a question. I'll break in here. Have you heard anything about Linda Lynn Hurst? I haven't heard anything for some time. I'm wondering how it's going. He's in the hospital.
I do have to apologize for not calling to check.
I tried to, but I couldn't get through. I never got a phone.
I know she was at the hospital today, but she didn't, I've talked her an email, but she didn't state, you know, anything updated. Couple of weeks ago, I spoke to her, everything was still the same regarding.
He's stable or?
As far as I know, from about ten or twelve days ago, yeah. Today she was at the hospital and she emailed me.
We might want to test this or something. Sorry.
No, no, that's, that's a great point. Because he's been up there for a while. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so again, this is just the ordinance.
Same ordinance.
Same ordinance is just, just dates change, that's it.
Do we have any questions?
And, and, and just one thing, there was a slight revision in the original motion. It said, um, ratify the advertisement. It should just be authorize the advertising because we haven't done that already.
Alrighty, so I have a motion.
I move the Board of Supervisors authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to happen on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for a temporary ordinance to provide certain relief with penalty and interest related payment on taxes for the first half of twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Ms. Seager and seconded by Mr. Weaver. All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. We'll now move forward with appointments. E, Board Committee and Commission appointments, Ms. Solis.
Um, but so again, we have one, uh, one reappointment. Uh, Mr. Marvin Moss wants to be reappointed as the Citizen Representative for the Rapid River Basin Commission. Term is, is set to begin April one, twenty twenty-one and would end March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And I can bring up the application that the board is interested, but again, Mr. Moss is currently on there.
If you notice his application, he is quite background.
Yes, he does.
Very impressive.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I move the Board of Supervisors to approve for the following, uh, interesting commission, yeah, commission, uh, Rapid River Basin Commission. It's the mob and loss, beginning term April one, twenty twenty-one, and ending term March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Seager. All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. There are no presentations. Consent agenda due F, Minutes of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, Ms. Solis. G, Minutes of March third, twenty twenty-one, Ms. Solis. H, Closed landfill environmental monitoring programs, Ms. Toller. I, FY twenty-one, DCJS Body worn camera grant award. Sean Peterson. J, Adoption of road name Belladore Lane, Mr. Wills. K, CRMF Bus Engine Replacements, Mr. Striplin. Promise you that's not the one I was driving. L, CRMF Electriever, file, Electriever filing system repair, Mr. Miles. M, FY twenty-one Sheriff Department Insurance Claim, two thousand and eighteen Dodge Charger VIN number oh, four, one, five, Mr. McGarver. Do we want to pull anything?
No, they already made a correction on that page.
Okay, so. Got a motion?
So made.
Second? Second. Motion's made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. We'll now move forward with unfinished business, strategic initiatives, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Doll.
And what's that? Ms. Harris and myself will kind of get over some of this. There are actually a few relevant issues.
Oh, I was gonna say, you can jump in. I'll, I'll say what he said. Um, I'm, I'm gonna try and not get lost in the weeds because we seem to be moving along quite nicely. Two, three areas I want to quickly go over. I, I want to talk just a little bit about the resident survey.
Ms. Harris, please forgive me. Something I forgot to do that I said we needed to do. Do I have a mo- motion to extend the meeting?
Somebody.
Motion made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mrs. Booker, ten?
Ten.
I mean, it's, it's just coming up all eight. All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye. Please go ahead, Ms. Harris.
I can't get the resident survey. Apparently this is in Mr. Booker's fault.
Totally.
It's okay. I, I am enjoying it. So I want to touch very briefly, uh, bathroom service, servants. Let's try that again. Residents survey, uh, jump forward to the strategic initiatives that you've outlined in your February tenth work session. And then talk a little bit more about registering. So what I can't get off my head is this idea of what, what did we really learn from the survey that we could summarize? And the more I think about it, this is sort of what I've come up with, what residents want. They want a diversified tax base. Um, activities that keep them in FuMane, whether it's shopping or sports or things like that. Affordability, food security, quality education for children. Taxes that match the services provided. To be heard, to be treated fairly. I might notice I missed the one that said a sense of place, because to me, all of that comes back to a sense of place. They want reasons to not leave FuMane. So often throughout the survey, there was mention of business. And that might have been, um, for jobs that pay well, for jobs that keep them in the county. Uh, for any number of things that all kind of came back to jobs. And then the other piece of that is to help ease the tax burden on homeowners. There were comments that said, you know, raise my taxes, just give me something more forward. So that was kind of how I, I. Taxes are not always the problem. Feeling like they're getting something for what they're paying. I just kind of wanted to wrap that up, and it does lead directly into the strategic initiatives. Um, in your February tenth, um, work session, these were the categories that you outlined. Infrastructure, which could be water, sewer, or broadband, or any other thing that fell under that. Those were the two primary ones. Code enforcement, ordinance review subdivisions. Mr. Sheridan, I think he had asked about the former town, we have sewage code issues, and I wasn't quite clear if that was just an update or an ongoing type of thing, so we got thrown off. A volunteer program and volunteer recognition. Uh, some talk about, uh, we need to first the county fire chief, P, county fire chief, and then the capital improvement plan. So those were the areas that you identified on the tenth. And then kind of throw on everything together. Oh. This just goes down, um, by individual supervisor. What it was you were interested in, Ms. Booker, you mentioned stoplight, cleaning up yards. I think we've heard a lot about ordinance review lately, particularly as it relates to cluster subdivisions. Again, looking at the infrastructure, long-term investments, um, for parks or um, county volunteers. Mr. Berman, you mentioned county volunteers. I also got the, my takeaway was that it might be to build a volunteer base that was in addition to fire and rescue, to have some sort of program where we have county volunteers who are in a larger sense having that program. Did I hear that correctly, the sort of the idea?
Yeah, and I understand too. I've got volunteers for the FLVP program. There's lots of volunteers just making sure that people know how they can contribute so they do feel like they have that sense of place. One of the things that I've learned, being on the board, is how many people do give on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And, and I think when you give, you feel connected. Some, something we really got to promote and look for those opportunities as well too, and then celebrate those volunteers as well.
So one of the things that, um, maybe not so much through this survey, but just to have listened over the last few years is, the county gets blamed for a lot and the county gets credited for a lot that aren't really ours. So programs like the FLVP aren't the counties, but certainly the folks who are in that program are benefiting from the county. Same thing with the, um, old farm day volunteers. They weren't the counties, but they certainly were giving good stuff. Um, you know, several years ago, when Mr. Nichols was still here, he created through board, um, direction approval, the to be good, right? Volunteer community, no, community volunteer coordinator. I'm right, yes, volunteer community volunteer coordinator. And we don't have one right now. There was, I think, a little confusion about exactly what that role is doing. So that's still out there, but, um, I don't want to talk too long about this. Need to, but I think the idea of celebrating and really highlighting the number of hours that FuMane residents give to the county laws or work well. So I just wanted to make sure I referred that correctly and understood it as we were before. Um, and then CIP program.
And we certainly mentioned a lot of CIP for projects.
So.
And you know, a lot of the, the commissions and boards that we have working in the county, a lot of them, I don't know, I would love to at a board meeting that all the people are members of a, a, a tax or something. So we can see who they are. If we can say, there should be, could be a celebration of this on Saturday month, and then we get to know who they are.
Or a piece with the name.
Um, let's see, so these are much the same. Term of course, I find volunteers, and then again. So then I categorized resident priorities. And this is, these are my categories, so things, they look weird, they must be weird. It, it is no understatement to say that overwhelmingly residents are concerned with economic development. And in any direction you could think of, too much, too little, in the wrong place, in the right place. Bring more business, stop chasing businesses away. Bring us jobs that will pay us, bring us stores that we can shop at. So any direction you could take economics about it, it is represented in the answers. Um, likewise, they're concerned with infrastructure, broadband, that word can't be said enough. Roads and traffic, we have some control over what happens there through our, um, consultation with VDA. Water, it's interesting because some folks harp about water for sign crossroads or its character, but mostly we get complaints about what's happening at the lake, which we have been controlling. And then for shared in the way the sign crossroads, water project. Um, loosely lumped under government, code enforcement, taxes and all its permutations. Fire and rescue, fiscal responsibility, public safety, the reassessment process came up time and again. If I had to hazard a bet, I would probably figure it's folks who saw too much of an increase. Although occasionally the folks who see, didn't get as much as they want because they're angry, sell their house. Redistricting, transparency, voting, and then this broad category, just elective issues. Transparency is one that I am, um, not concerned about because I think we are transparent. My concern is always how do we better get the word out? You have a question, ask the question. Can I show you where it is on our website? Here you go. To not connect to the internet, home. That's my concern. I think we do break up. Education, um, COVID, I certainly messed that up in the last year. Uh, and schools funding was also showed up several times. Health and human services, um, I think what I didn't put there, put under community. There is a concern about, um, access and equity in healthcare. COVID, of course, and then recovery from COVID, uh, public health, senior services, and then health and human services all came up. Under community, I'm not gonna read them all out, you can see that there's a very broad from activities to, they're concerned about racial equity and insecurity. So there's a lot there that folks are really concerned about that do play into our strategic initiatives. Excuse me. Uh, and then land use, back to preserving that balance of world of development, zoning, and then, uh, some interesting comments about how we should be preserving our natural environment and the number of acres that we should be requiring people to build on, no less than ten to fifteen acres for anybody in front of them. So. Somehow winged myself. Let me guess.
Jalen been doing, that's all I wanna know.
Kelly earlier.
Well, I, I, so just a bit of touch on this, you know, you had your strategic initiatives from, from last time. And, and you went over this, and there was a lot of things that weren't completed and some things that are kind of still in process. And you know, here are some of them. And there's a lot of things on here that we're already doing, we're kind of addressing, but they're not completely finished. So as Kelly and I were talking a little bit earlier about, you know, how do we want to bring this forward and, you know, and, and have the board kind of, because the ultimate goal is for the board to kind of adopt and approve their strategic initiatives for the rest of this year. So our thinking is, is to, the items that are still on here, um, is to move forward and, and, and keep those on the list because there are things that we're still working on and they're continuing, but also, as Kelly said, incorporate some of the things from, from our little strategic session. That's board talked about, you know, whether it's Mrs. Booker or, or, or Mr. Sheridan, or whoever brought up ideas. And some of them are already in our strategic initiatives already. But this way, what our thinking is, leave what's there, add what's not on there, bring it before the board in your next meeting for, for, which we would hopefully envision as review, or review and approval. And, um, and also too, maybe incorporating in, in some of the citizens' ideas, which we think are largely incorporated in the strategic initiatives already, or some of the things the board has brought. So that's, that's kind of, that's kind of our next thought. And like I said, we can, we can go over this in detail if you want. I'm not sure if you want to do that. But again, you know, it's in the board package for, for ones outstanding. The only things on here under, you know, service delivery, of communication, project management, and, you know, that kind of development tourism, these are things that were not one hundred percent completed and checked, checked the box and part of operations now. We're still kind of working on these things in some fashion.
But like with, uh, game one, that was, uh, that was further tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that, um, like Kelly presented, as what she saw from disturbing, needs to be. And I think that um, like Kelly presented, is what she saw from disturbing needs to be go out to the public. They need to know that we, that you heard them, and these are the things that you got from this five hundred and some people. Kind of validate their work and what they did.
So I, the big presentation I did a couple of weeks ago, I did push up.
Yes. I saw that.
So are there, are you envisioning other ways of?
Really what you get when you start it off.
Today, tonight, okay. And then also in, in April, I hope, I hope fingers are very well crossed. That the resident, the report to residents will go up and a lot of this will go up there as well.
I just wanted to thank you. You're probably doing it. The things that we're doing to address this, so many times it seems to me to be, I won't say misinformation, but just not enough communication.
Absolutely.
Because we're talking about broadband and I, I'll dare bet that there's not too many other counties that got. Already lined up or ninety percent of their county will be covered with broadband with, or have the opportunity to have broadband within.
When is, when are they supposed to finish? Uh, next year or a little?
Yeah, I mean, twenty year mark right there, but. It was twenty twenty four, but they're ahead of schedule. I mean, and we also have the five percent of fourteen district that's covered by Dominion. That I, I'm guessing five percent.
Yeah, I mean, what, what we, what we expanded uh, in down, down, you know, route six and fifteen and stuff. Know that, that, that's going to increase a little bit. And, and there's, there's still some areas and unfortunately with some of these new partnerships that are coming forward. I think that, again, I think broadband.
Major, I believe these three only. Electrical providers are Appalachian, Dominion, and Sebeck.
Yes.
And Firefly and, and those three companies are all together.
And Appalachian's already been done or. Part of it, I mean, you have to trust me, one of the teachers lives on that market, it wasn't done, and she's been wearing me out.
Yeah, but they're all going to be, they're all going to be able to be that.
And, and so we're, we're, we're looking at possibly within a year and a half, having our entire county with broadband access.
I would say that puts us at probably one of less than a hundred counties in the country that, you know, can say that.
And in the state of Virginia, I can't imagine, there's too many of them that have a hundred percent coverage.
Now, I'm kind of dumb. When I see the fiber. Right on the road at Park Union with the orange thing sticking up in the air, that means they're not hooked up.
Not, no, not.
They, they, they've got everything laid out, they just haven't finished going into each box and completely hooking it in. And I like broadband, seeing this little black light hanging on the pole, just saying, okay, if you, when you want it, I can get it to your house.
And then, as I was saying to someone, I'm starting with Tony, I was saying that um. We may have it, we have it accessible, but there will be some people who will not be able to afford it. Unless down the road, these people can have a special price. Of families for children, like Comcast does in Charles, but they only pay nine dollars, used to be. Nine dollars and ninety-five cents a month, so that the kids can use it. We are at that point, it's wanted to be accessible. Got to work on how we get people hooked up with plan of course fifty dollars a month. Then you're really, you're really doing something. We can have all the fiber in the world, but I have to.
So, so right now, there is a federal. Emergency broadband benefit. I don't know how long it lasts. It's been in Fannie, it took it out last week. So that is.
People hold that um, Kelly's other, when we get to that point, we will have that information for people to vote.
Federal um. Tell grant is the answer, it's reduced extremely much, so there's already some. So, so that is.
Yeah, it's going to have to be on reduced much.
So, so, so we'll come back to the board with what's remaining, what the board talked about, if it's, if, if it's not already kind of on here already in some fashion or. Or not. And then that'll be for the board to then approve and, and that can kind of be your, your roadmap for to the end of this calendar.
So Eric, did you want to touch on uh? The data dashboard and the question and answer.
Oh, yeah, there, there's a couple that we had. Um, there's a couple that we questioned.
If I don't have to have another woman bring it back to you, it would make me a tough person.
It's, it's only that, it's, it, it's from a standpoint of, of, it's, you know, the, the data dashboard. I, I think Mr. Nichols before imagined the same where, where, where data is just plugged in there all the time and all these documents are there. And we can certainly do that, but, but, but I think. You know. We think that there may be a different way to do that, you know, we, we, we put out, you know, some of our presentations and stuff. That we do to the board contain a lot of data sometimes, uh, you know, we put those on the website, but to have. You know, I mean, there's certain documents we could have out there as, you know, some special report, but I, but I think what he envisioned is every department. To throw all these metrics on there and, and, and already, you already have some external agencies that are reporting on county metrics and stuff like that. So, you know.
I, I think, I mean, I think a. Um, I'll give a couple of examples. One is, you know, we talk a lot about it in meetings, especially around budget time. You know, the tax burden and what that, the impact is on the taxpayer. We take that seriously. But it, when you look at it from an inflation adjusted period, what has really been the progress of the county? That's a simple chart that people want to look at, you know, because you could say everything you want to in the world, but. Reality is twenty-five years ago, you were paying more in Savannah County, you know, than you are today. I mean, that's, that's the reality, okay? But, you know, that, it, it may not seem the same, but inflation adjusted, that's the case. Um, I did an interview the other day with the Lake Monticello uh, you know, uh, video group there. And, you know, it, I asked for simple metrics from Mr. Rothman, I would, you know, pretty much you would think you'd be able to get. He provided me with some things, but it'd just be nice to be able to have that on the dashboard. And frankly, you know, struggling to come up with what businesses were at it this year and that year. Because it wasn't put together in data fashion, not because we haven't created a lot of businesses and had a lot of investments. You know, projects, uh, yeah, we're not done with the project yet, but where do we stand in terms of completion? So you've got just a simple, like, six key components in terms of metrics. That people can quickly look at and say, oh, yeah, okay, now the water project at TXR is seventy-five percent complete. Estimated date is this. Doesn't mean it's done yet, but it's a quick snapshot that says what, what's happened. Oh, now this, the county just added this new business. Okay, perfect. You know, that's the kind of thing that I envision. It's just a quick snapshot that somebody can go out and look at and say, oh yeah, this is moving in the right direction. You don't need to have all, all of the information. We don't need every single metric. Yeah, but just.
Just what are we doing? People say, oh, you're not doing anything. That's not true.
We are doing a lot. Yeah, we have, we have a lot going on and, 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 and sometimes that's the problem. We have so much going on to try and get to this, the type of stuff. I think about, you know, when we talk about finance, there, there was a time where we could get a lot of these reports done, we had all these special reports. Well, we didn't have a lot of care spending and all this other stuff going on at the same time. So, so it, it, it comes down to a workload, it doesn't mean we can't get to it, it's just sometimes, sometimes trying to have some of this. And you get criticized if you're not constantly keeping it updated. And, and so there's that fine line of, of having the information and having good. After current information out there too, so we'll, we'll have to go back to the drawing board on that a little bit.
And I think there are ways to do um. I think the vision for what was originally the data dashboard was just too big and too much and required. They weren't metrics, there was nothing being measured, it was just a data.
Yeah.
So I think just to reword it, but I want to clarify that it won't make me a happy person if you get rid of them, if I don't have to bring it back to you again and say, there's this one.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think one of the things that the survey highlighted was a little bit of a disconnect from what the public perceives.
Yes.
As opposed to what's actually going on. And I, I, I think that's always, you know, if, if one of the things was, what is the value for my tax dollar? And you don't make it very evident that this is what we've done for their tax dollar, then that's a missed opportunity.
And that is always where I, my eyeballs are trained, is how do we better tell the story of what we're really doing in the county? Or where you go find information about this thing that you need, how do you get it more visible with less work for the resident? I'm just always thinking along those lines. And so I saw that disconnect in the. You know, sometimes I'll see stuff on Twitter, I will not respond on Twitter, but I want to so badly when I see so much misinformation. If it doesn't come to us directly, then don't respond to it publicly. The other one that was like this was um, also under Mr. Nichols. He wanted to have an interactive web component where people could ask questions and other residents could respond through website. I, I'm going on record saying I'm adamantly opposed to that.
Well, I'll be, well, I'll be stressed.
No, however, I do think there is much value in any time we receive a question from the public. If it is something that would benefit the rest of the public, then we create a frequently asked question.
If, if, if it's something that's being asked on a continual basis, we just need to put out more attitudes on that.
Yes, and that's easily done and, and it's, it's only time consuming in the moment, it's not a keep it up.
Oh, right, yes, B five, so.
So not in the way it was originally envisioned, but I think we can come up with something that would satisfy the same intent.
So, okay, so, so we'll bring this, bring this back to the board next meeting, incorporate what, what, what you had mentioned and, and then we'll kind of. See if the board has any, any changes from that standpoint, if not, we will look for approval at the next meeting or any, or any suggestions.
You know, we, we really don't say much about school systems in some of these meetings. Not that we really have a job. Savannah County schools, listen to Charlottesville, now Lamar County, the problems they have. And the recognition Savannah County gets, the accreditation. Their.
Silver Star.
Silver Star, uh, something like one percent absenteeism. There, there's some sort of certification, I don't understand all these, but I hear about them. But I think that's something. That we should be very proud of what our taxpayers' money does for the children in this county.
Yeah, okay, we, we have great graduates that come out and succeed. I mean, you know, Mr. Sheridan, probably there's five hundred of them if you, if you wanted to.
Lot of law enforcement officers. I say that and I'm not joking, I mean, that I had one team, six seniors, five of them are in law enforcement. They wanted to serve their community and that's what they went and did. Well, I, I, I would say I'm, I'm absolutely not going to take credit for that, but, you know.
That's good.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? May I speak? Linda, Linda Stager.
Yes, ma'am, Stager.
I'm, I'm very excited to hear Ms. Harris's report. And, and I'm so excited that I felt like I had to say something. Uh, we had a meeting today of the alumni group of the FLDP. And the, one of the things that we talked about was putting on um. Uh, seminars, I'll call it a seminar for the public about things in the county. Like infrastructure, because when you're in the FLDP class, you have a class on infrastructure and you learn about infrastructure, but. But then you're not in the class anymore and things change. And so we're, we're talking about doing a series of. Events that would be open to the public, that would talk about the current state of things like infrastructure. Or economic development, or some of these big categories that Ms. Harris just outlined in her report. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping um, that we could perhaps work together to, to do this. Communication tool to get out to uh, the county residents about what things are going on. So we, we do have the ability to put ads out uh, and do communication with, with our alumni. And with the public to promote these uh, these events. I'll say it's an event. Uh, currently it would be an online thing, it might be a forum. We might ask people in the county administration or people on the board of supervisors to come and talk. And just as an educational forum. So I, I just was so excited to hear what you were saying that I felt I should mention that. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, because that would have, that, that would be appreciated, because you just talked about verifying the things that are going on. And a lot of people don't know, lack of communication is a lot of times where unrest comes from. Uh, so.
So the last thing, part of strategic conditions, we kind of.
So I'm mostly, I'm almost completely level at Mr. Payne handling this one. But as mentioned in the work session, uh, I don't think it's put it off any longer. There are things that we have to. Move forward on and now Mr. Payne is going to tell you why.
Okay, Mr. Payne.
I feel like I should say, take it away.
Uh, let me say, we are in uncharted waters. I've been dealing with redistricting in Savannah County since at least nineteen ninety. And we've never had a problem like this. The, the basic law on this is, this, this is a memorandum that was taken from some data that came through the. Registry. Then the constitution requires the uh, the districts be. At least. Adjusted to the extent that they need to be considered for re, for redistricting or whatever. And it just says, it's required to be done in every year, even in one. And uh, the reason for nineteen seventy was that was the year the constitution was, was ratified. The problem is, if you go down and look at the, at how you're supposed to do it. There is a uh. Authority for the proposition that the uh. That this is all supposed to be done. The code section is, it cites there's twenty-four point two, it's four, there's three oh seven. That uh. We are required to establish these precinct boundaries. Be consistent with the legislative district uh, boundaries. There's, there's a, an exception for this because of the, the redistricting provision and things like that. The point is, what do we do when we come down to November election? Because the statute, the statutes and the constitution contemplate. In that November election, the candidates run for, for elections for those offices are going to run for those specific districts. And. We need to have the districts established before you can do that. Now, the, the problem we've got, of course, is that we don't have permanent. Official uh, population figures. So the question is, Mr. Sheridan, for example, and pick, just pick Mr. Sheridan as an example. If he runs for reelection this year, what district is, is he representing? And what is the result of the election? So uh. The question is, how do we address this? And I think we are kind of making it up as we go along, frankly, because I don't think anybody really knows. But I talked with Chris Harris the other day and uh. If I understand it, our staff will be able to come up with what we believe to be. If I understand it, our staff will be able to come up with what we believe to be the substantial approximation of, uh. How the population has changed and what the, what the allocation by district is, thanks for that. But. You can see the problem if we come to, down to a November election. And the supervisors who, by our, our standard terms, are running for election. What districts are they running in? Cause you all talked very briefly the other day about, about, uh, the potential for having some number other than five districts. Whether it would be six, or seven, or four, three, whatever it might be. That, of course, is, is an essential decision, because if you all decide that we've got to have. We're gonna stay at five districts, then it's a question of adjusting the district lines to come up with the appropriate, uh, balance of, for, uh. Their being as equal as this can be. Now, if we usually approximate numbers, I think that what we're gonna end up with. If we have a dis, a decision that's gonna be, they're gonna remain five districts. I think that our staff could come up with, uh, numbers. That would make it so that each of those districts is approximately the same size, but then, I mean, it's a ten percent.
Yeah, overall.
A ten percent, uh, margin. We can do this, you know, the.
It's five percent for any district. It's five percent plus or minus, that's what it is for two percent overall, I think, that's it, yeah.
So, uh.
Did, I'm sorry.
But those would not be official figures.
Population totals, uh, per five districts.
Can be five percent plus or minus.
Yeah.
Could be five percent higher or five percent lower.
But ten percent overall, so one could be five percent smaller.
Yes.
One could be five percent higher.
That's right.
Yeah.
And of course, what we, what we saw last time was that, that it made some. Frankly, kind of funny looking districts, because you had. The Columbia District had to be very carefully designed. So that Columbia just didn't, the, the village of Columbia wasn't limited, because the, the population. Population of, of, of the other districts sort of came in and assumed a lot of that space. And, uh. So. What I think we were talking about today, which makes sense to me, is for the board to make at least tentative decision on how many districts you want. And then to, you, you may need the, the staff's input as to where, you know, what, what the growth patterns are and stuff like that. And then go ahead and establish the districts so that people can, can run for election for the November election. Uh, I believe we've got to have that all in place by, uh, September. You know, I think it's sixty days before the election.
Sixty days before the general, or ninety days of the general election. I'm not looking at, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's either August or September. Uh, it may be August.
But the, uh, so I talked to Mr. Overstreet today. I want to clarify something that Dr. Stager mentioned in her comments about the numbers that we used. When Mr. Overstreet and I did our calculations, we did include too many months of twenty twenty, actually, yes, twenty twenty, we should have. Uh, ended at April thirty of November, March thirty first of twenty twenty. However, we excluded months in twenty eleven that we should have included, so it, it's a bit of a wash. So I'm not concerned that our.
It's probably not a wash, but twenty twenty, twenty eleven's probably won't be.
Yeah, so I'm not concerned that our numbers are very far off.
But twenty twelve through twenty seventeen was small.
Yeah.
We didn't do it all.
I'm not concerned that our numbers are very far off there and.
Five hundred.
Mr. Overstreet.
In a year.
Indicated that he is able to pull down some data from the census, uh, year that they have released. If I understood it correctly, he is able to overlay some total population numbers, but we can't see specific plots of population, so that's what we can't see. But we can tell from where building permits were issued for most of the growth that's happened, so that we wouldn't draw a line that we'd then have to. That's gonna go that way, that's gonna go that way. So I am, I'm pretty confident that we could come up with a reasonable approximation without too many adjustments. If we have to have it all done by August, then the census data doesn't come out until October, I don't know what that does, of course. They applied it with no promises and no crystal balls, and he does think that the General Assembly will have to. They'll have to address this, because this is everything on me.
Yeah, not just ours, it's true for everybody. So well, even if you have the, even if you have the districts wrong, you still have to have the candidates on the slate and. That has to happen by June third.
Yeah, so that brings up the question that we have the, the districts drawn, but we find out from census data that the line does shift. And the candidate lives to the left of where the line used to be, I don't know what we do. Those are the unknowns.
Definitely uncharted, yeah.
Nobody would have said what he's gonna have to have in here and say, you know, what you got in your chat, what you. Now, my question would be this, we talked about having that second. A special election, did it? Does that mean that Ms. Eager and Ms. Booker are two years into their term, do they have to run on a special election also?
What do you mean by running a special?
So that was, you, you argued for the Columbia work session, so one of the things that had been thrown out, uh, in general conversation from other places was that. It's possible that you run on what you have and then another year you have a special election for in two years. So there's so many unknowns about that and no, nobody wants to step down about what's going to happen.
Well, my, my suggestion would be that you task the staff with. Giving you some preliminary numbers in. With an objective of determining how many districts the, the board wants to have. Or the board wants to continue with five or come up with some other number. And then pass the step with drawing those districts, at least in general terms. Now, my feeling is. This, I can't give you definitive answer to this, because the statutes just don't even contemplate this situation. But my feeling is that if you did that and complied with the numbers that we were able to find. It gives a confidence statistical analysis that an election based on those in November would be valid. There is provision for remending district lines thereafter if necessary for, for a reason. And, uh, one of those reasons might be to have the, to accommodate the legislative districts, which are not set to my knowledge. And, and the statute for that, as you see on the board up there under three oh seven. Contemplates that that, that had to be done by June fifteen. If it's not, then sort of the counties do the best they can.
Yeah.
And, uh, so what I'm thinking is, just say, for example. Again, I'm not signaling Mr. Mr. Sheridan now, just for example. Mr. Sheridan runs for the Columbia District. And runs with the Columbia District configured as the staff can determine it should be based on. What operation, the, the, the data we have. Turns out that that's wrong and it should be adjusted in some fashion. Next year, that could be, uh. The, the district could be amended. It wouldn't require an additional election, because Mr. Sheridan would already have been presumably reelected for the four-year term. And then the, the new district would be effective for, for the next succeeding election, wherever it's. So then, say, Mr. O'Brien's term came up for, for next year. Then he would run in the new, in the new district, whatever that was. Now, obviously, there, there are problems with that. So for example, the line runs right by Mr. Sheridan's house, it turns out it ought to be shifted, you know, two hundred feet to the east. I suspect that that's the kind of thing that you could accommodate. By, uh, having been through these redistrictings or, you actually move the line to leave somebody where, where, where he is. Or to put him in another district.
Would you find that two of us are in the same district?
Yeah.
Like Ms. Booker, let's just say Ms. Booker and I end up in the same district, but we're both elected, she is fourteen and me is Columbia. Then we both wind up being in Columbia.
No, we shouldn't have to do that. The point is, let's say Ms. Booker and Mr. Sheridan. They're clearly not in the same district now.
Right.
If, under my suggestion, you amend the district lines. Tentatively. For the November election and you would assure that Mr. Sheridan and Mrs. Booker are not in the same district. Now, if it turns out that, that the way those lines were drawn was an error and they should be amended. You don't have to say, well, this is what they're automatically goes over to this, Mr. Sheridan's district. You could say where the, where the, the proper line should be. Follow me?
And then do a little loop like we did around prison.
It could be. You might have to do, I mean.
Yeah. Um, so I was assuming that, um, the planning, uh, community, Kelly and Tocqueville. You all are drawing these lines and then bringing them to us or we.
Oh, certainly, yes.
And then we will, and we'll be doing this in a meeting where the public can hear our discussion and be sure that that's the process.
I don't remember whether you were on the board.
No, I was, I mean, Mr. Weaver and I were on the redistricting. On party ten, but we didn't, we met at, with the planning commission at the office, in that office, and they brought us the papers. And they reported to the.
Right.
And we cut, not that.
I would envision it would be a similar process. And, and all of that was done, all those decisions were done.
Right.
Now, the, the recommendations were not, they were done like staff recommendations.
Right.
Which are, you know, you don't do that necessarily in public, because they're all just sort of thought.
And so we still want to establish a mission, is what you're saying.
You, you do it the same way.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, then you would probably just continue that effect until we got the official results.
Sure.
But I think you need to, I think you need to move on this, at this point. Get the staff moving, that's what I agree with.
Get the staff moving and set up the commission, start the process and see what happens.
Yes.
Does anyone know what is.
Prisoners.
Prisoners can now vote in their home district.
But they, well, no, they would vote at the prison, but it would count for wherever they came from.
Yeah, before they're incarcerated, they would, they would be counted as if they were trying to be incarcerated. So, so, so let's just come around them, we're saying we have one thousand prisoners, and only ten of them actually are from Kalamata County.
Well, but they might not be from my district. And so if they're not from my district, because they're from your district, they're voting for you. Or for whomever, it depends on our.
Do they vote, do they not vote?
They, they don't vote at the moment, but I think they're going to be able to vote. I don't know, that's not, that's above my paper.
They probably just, they probably just announced something about that like just.
If you have.
Restitution, yeah.
They talked about allowing.
Yeah, I think you just started announcing something yesterday.
Yeah, it was something. Frank Tyler down the radio.
Oh, oh, we got a young man back in here, might be a subject back there.
Sixty nine thousand, whether the rest of your rights, best of any of this.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, it's coming in general, somebody did just make it automatic, but I think it was sooner this morning or last night, it signed off the rest of it, so they.
Yeah.
They couldn't vote.
But that's not.
Not yet, that's been.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's not, the way you said is like, you hit up sixty nine people and signed off.
Sixty nine thousand.
Thousand people just signed up, that's a big process. I mean, that's a big process. It's, it's about to be paid, you gotta be, no P O, I mean, they go through that, I had to do that for people.
There's some proposed legislation to, uh, include, I think currently it's people that are on probation cannot go to the store.
Yeah.
But I think there's some proposed or pending legislation that'll make it, it doesn't matter whether you're on probation or not.
Ms. Booker, that's not, that's not really the issue for this purpose, for this purpose.
They didn't look out.
People in the prison are, are counted under a pre-existing law.
I understand.
For purposes of the population, even if they, they can't vote.
Yeah, but they count.
They're counted, in this case, they would not be counted unless they're Kalamata residents.
Uh huh.
So, so Mr. Sheridan's thousand captive, captive citizens. Would no longer be in his district. So.
Okay.
So, that's, that's gonna affect where the lines are, between Mrs. Mrs. Zinger's line and Mr. Sheridan's line.
All right. So, we need to decide if we want five districts, six districts, seven districts.
Why don't we start off with what we have and see what happens? Let's see what that, I think, I'm not sure, but they might be easier to do it with the five districts, because they can figure out where the houses are. And we're gonna do that way, and if it doesn't reach, then, then we go to a higher.
So we know that the lines will have to move for five, so we can know that. Uh, and, and what can happen is that Virginia geographically grows larger. Columbia geographically grows larger. Cunningham and Palmyra shrink, and Ravenna stays almost exactly the same. We know that from looking at where the, the houses are built. So then it just becomes a matter of moving the lines in a way that corresponds to the requirements of, um.
Plus or minus?
Yeah, the plus or minus from population, but then if it follows easily, what is it, easily understandable boundaries.
Yeah. For, for natural growth, for.
So it doesn't, you know, like, as.
I mean, I just thought if we did seven, we could line up naturally and try to represent the population.
You really represent. You have done, just in my tenure, you have, uh.
Five and six.
No, you actually had four.
Yeah, oh, it had four.
You had four, and you actually, I think, went to seven.
I think it's seven.
I think you went to seven.
I think five or seven would be equally feasible to.
The odd number is desired.
My, my, my only thought process, process with seven would be, you have, like we did before, you take the lake. Uh, or Ravenna, and you have a Ravenna West and a Rav, or Ravenna South, a Ravenna North. And then we just add a district in around the county.
I mean. The, the lake technically has up to three representations, as it stands right now. I mean, if, if you have a lake resident running for Mr. Weaver's seat, you have a lake resident running for Mrs. Zinger's seat, you have three lake supervisors, right?
Right.
As it currently stands. So it's not that it's underrepresented, it's just depends on who. Who supervises.
Well, and I guess my thing is to, to geographically, it's forty percent population is there.
But, but again, it's not the Ravenna district that's forty percent.
Right, right, no, I'm just talking about the lake in general.
We talk about surrounding.
You can think of it, if you, if you want to see an example of this, look at the planning commission, because planning commission has the same, the same alignment as, than you do. But, for example, in my district, Mrs. Zinger's district. The planning commission member is Mr. Wiger Messino, who, who lives at the lake. But he lives at a portion of the lake that's.
One of the outside of the.
So, that, it, it wouldn't be impossible to do it and, uh. I think what you found, but if I recall correctly, members of the board that were on the board at that time, correct me. I think the, uh, my memory is that it was a sense of the board that seven was an unwieldy number.
Right.
It was too big.
Too big.
And, uh, that's why you went down to six and then six, of course, was a problem, because then you, then you had ties.
Really, right.
That's how you came up with five, so there's good sound rationale staying.
Yes.
But, uh.
One, one advantage of staying at five right now is that there's a lot more certainty to the districts if you do it, in terms of. What happens in terms of the election period, based on what you had said earlier, whereas if you have. You know, seven, two other districts in play and those lines don't happen the way we thought, or the people can't get elected in that period of time. It creates even more uncertainty. So that's, and I, I mean, I, I kind of feel like we're circumventing the process, but I know that previously there had been a. Commission that was kind of looking at this and I'm certainly in favor of getting, you know, some input from some other citizens as well, too.
Commission, commissions for legislative districts.
No, 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 that the board previously assigned a committee, that they pretty sure.
Oh, yeah.
They called a commission, but we.
That's all right, if you want to do that. I'm not saying you can or. That's all, if you wanna do that, it's, it's, I'm not saying you can or shouldn't do that. What I'm saying is you need to do.
Sure, and I mean, and maybe we bypass a committee, I just, you know, just throwing that out there.
Why you have a little other board to do that?
No, we don't wanna do that.
I know, I know, but all the other stuff.
Because the board, you can pick a few members and members from the board. We don't have. We live it all our lives, we live it with people, many people, they know it all the time. Uh, you gotta get some.
But they give you a choice.
We don't have to have.
We gave them a choice, remember, it was like, uh, four, or five, six, and seven, in other words, we did, I think, three different districts.
Three different maps.
Three different.
Four, we did.
Whatever that was, yeah. Then the board had the choice of which way they wanted to go.
Right.
And it goes seven, six.
So, the.
Or it used to be four.
Four appointments, or is that, uh, we'll just work together?
There, there's no reason you have to have a formal body to do that. You could simply, one way to do it, we, to, to simply have, have the staff work the numbers up, and the chairman could appoint the, the committee of the, of the two members, for example. And then that committee, the board can do those, those things, give input, because Mrs. Eager said, it's by nature, by your nature, you have knowledge of the county that, that most people just don't have.
You have institutional members as well, I certainly will. Mr. Mel Sheridan has expressed interest in serving on such a committee, as well as, um, this dress base.
Those two, well, they're counted, good.
Yeah, who was the second?
Miss Pace, the registered.
Dress pace, yeah.
There's no, there's no reason that you have to have formal membership on a committee, you could have.
An informal work group.
I agree that Mr. Mel Sheridan has got enormous, enormous institutional and personal information about him. But there's no reason you can't, he can't make that contribution to our, just to the staff, to the committee of the board, whoever you want to do.
But, I mean, um, I would mind doing, but I don't know, I mean, Ms. Booker, did, wasn't you and Mr. Weaver did it before?
I'm happy to be on it.
I mean, do y'all wanna do it?
I don't want to trickle out, if I've had, had experience, but somebody else.
You, you wanna do it?
I don't, I mean, whatever you all wanna do, I've talked before, and I, I, I would be on it, but if you all would be on it, that's fine.
Yeah.
You, you can do it, you probably got more time than I do.
Well, I'd be on it. It's, it's not that I'm assuming any.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, yeah.
I'm not, but.
Okay. All right.
And if you do that, if you do it as a committee of the board, through our subject for Freedom of Information Act, you have to meet in public, you have to have published defenders, and you have to keep minutes.
It's just two.
It's just two.
It's just two, it doesn't matter, it's a committee of the board.
They have to do it.
Yes, yes.
I can dust off my minutes.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I think it would be good to have a, a, again, a, a meeting where people come in and provide it, provide it, but transparency, we talk about transparency.
I'll narrate it down there. You might narrate it down there.
Well, I can control who, how people.
Yeah, we can limit it to, you know, twenty people or whatever.
Well, what I mean is you, you can task the staff with giving you the information, and then you can have, you know, you can have.
We can have some free plan things ready for you to look at.
And there will be public meetings down the road.
Fred, what I'm saying is if they have, if they're having a meeting and Mr. Weaver or Mr. O'Brien can't get there, to call Mrs. uh, Eager out, can we just take their place one night, as long as it's still just you and us?
You can point a, you can point a, uh.
Substitute. Mr. O'Brien, if you can't get there, you call Miss Eager, and Mr. Weaver, you call me.
Okay.
And out of the way, we got, we got it covered. All right.
And I suppose I will ask.
That's, um, that's, the substitution is going around in my head. And I'm thinking that, I've been sitting on this board, and I have all this.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Booker.
And then I can't come, and then he has to come for me. Then you have to start all over again, because he doesn't have the information. I just, I just think you need to be steady, you don't be on there, be on it. Excuse me, I'll just sit.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, if something happens, you know, you never know what time it comes up, you can't be somewhere.
It happened when I stood next to him.
Well, then, then it's not gonna fall apart if only one gets there, that's what I'm saying.
I'll be fixed up.
If I'm sitting, can't be there.
Yeah, you, we have some of the data already, so we can certainly.
Well, you don't wanna.
Mr. Miles.
As mentioned, um, everyone's tracking great on this whole pro- process, um, the board and staff. Planning G I S, Mr. Overstreet's done a lot of this work already, behind the scenes with Kelly. So, um, I think in the timeframe that we're supposed to do it, we're gonna have plenty of time to do that, he's created a lot of these kind of, uh, you know, districts already, five, keep it at five, it's great, not a lot of change. In a year or two, once we know the full census data, and we can change it to seven or whatever if we had to, but.
We can't change.
Everything that you're.
Well, you can, I, I think that would be awkward to do that.
I, I'd rather just look at both of them if we, if we.
Show you the, or tell them, show you the differences, but really, the less change that you make in uncertain timeframe, the better it's, it's gonna be. And, and I think you'll see the numbers that he's already.
Is he putting the different numbers, or is he developing the map?
He's developing the map, um, just also, like, you know, he did this in his previous locality a couple times, and, and so he's.
And he, and he worked, and he worked as he could see.
That's, 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 go to seven, at least we can just all of the, we have less people.
When I thought of that. Mike has the traffic, go seven, that's the.
We'll see what.
That's why, that's why, we'll.
We wanted to put it all.
We'll get a map.
Let's put that in all.
Yeah. All right, so, so I guess, so we've got a couple weeks here.
Yeah. I think that's the.
Two weeks.
We've got to finish by then, and then we'll start.
Well, I mean, we got, you got the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first, there are Wednesdays coming up. And we don't have a meeting, don't even wanna.
That's the one that's canceled, yeah.
The one, well, that's the one we just canceled. Hey, I ain't gotta be here.
Would I, would I understand the will of the force correctly, that my son and Mr. Overstreet and the other staff member, they need to, should start now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean.
And then, and then you can meet with Mr. Weaver and I, you could say, hey, can we meet this day?
And, and you.
Or this day.
Yeah, or this evening, evening's better for me.
And, and, and from an initial standpoint, I mean, just so we're kind of on track for, for what we're providing, does, does the board or, or between, do they wanna see, you know, let's see three different map variations, or, or just so we have something to.
At least two.
Perhaps six and seven. I would suggest that what you, what you should start off with, is if you're consent, contented, to make a tentative decision on five, that you're gonna have five districts, let the staff create, let the staff create the district based on pure statistical, um, issues, so. Now, if it turns out that there's some, uh, you know, enclave of, of, uh, family that ought to be kept together or something, that, that board can make that kind of input, but I think the, you do not wanna make this purely political, to wanna make it.
But I'm not making it purely political.
Yeah, I know, it looks that way, but if we start off there, having.
They just said they had three the last time.
Yeah.
Three choices.
And that was on, and those, that was still.
We weren't on the board.
I know, but what I'm talking about is, I, I have no, no problem with board members coming in and saying that the, the line's staff is drawn here, need to be changed in some way. Or the staff should come back and give us some alternatives about this, but I think you need to start with a baseline, it's purely statistical. Okay?
Yeah, but, but that gives you a, a better perception if you have three made up. That might change your mind, I'll get it, if you're only looking at one, you don't know what, maybe six or seven.
No one may be asking for a lot, definitely.
No, I don't think, I don't think it's asking for too much, I don't, just, a lot of the work is.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, just, just so we can see perspective lines.
And, and, and just for everyone to know, I, I've told Mr. Overstreet that you may be working on this, uh, twenty, thirty hours a week until we get it done, and that's just what we have to do, and we're fine with that.
Yeah, exactly, we, we just, we just need the direction, are, are we looking for different maps for different districts, or are we looking for, or for just five districts and three different variations, or what, what?
No, I mean, I hear you saying five, six, or seven districts, so I don't care where the district is drawn.
But, we should look at it short period of time, we don't know really what the numbers are. This is unprecedented. Easy, they change variants. So, let's try it with five, we know that five is better than six, and two, and three, three times, right? And, um, then we can look at, we could probably, we have five.
Well, I certainly wanna look at at least two. Oh, yeah. Map was, to look at least two.
I think what, and what Miles is saying is, you could have three variations on five.
Yes. Well, we're sure, he could have ten.
You can, I mean, there is no limit of variations you can have.
So, I think that's what, what, what.
Well, you need variations on something else, too.
The, the, and, 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 and again, I think when it comes to a normal year, to Mrs. Eager's point, you know, that makes a lot of sense, but we have an abnormal year, and if we start talking about setting expectations for seven districts, and it blows up in our face, I mean, just because we have no idea what they're gonna do, that's just not gonna make a lot of sense.
And it's more likely that that happens.
More likely that's gonna be the case, so with five, it's a matter of tweaking a line, if you need to tweak a line. Seven, you could end up in a whole lot of hurry.
Well, but it's, this decision is made for ten years, I know, and, and that's why I'm just trying to get equal representation there.
Well, equal representation is, is, is the, the main touchstone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, the five, so, so I, I, I'm clearly with five districts and some variation maps of that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I think that's right.
I guess, yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, you got three people to say that.
Um.
As far as very, yeah. Like I said, I just.
The point is that if you come up, if you see, the staff gives you a, a five member district, a five district counting, and you see some serious anomaly in it that, that, that needs to be addressed, you can always tell them to go back and give me a seven number.
Right.
Yes, a seven number.
That's all I'm saying, it's just do a tentative one, just to look at it.
I think we just.
And all of that.
As, as we move.
Without trying to weigh them down. And I'm not telling them where to put the district, I just, the only reason I said that is I was sitting there thinking you could have one at the firehouse and one at the clubhouse, like they used to.
And a lot of that's also changed because of the location of the registration.
Yeah, but we're just getting twenty-five million dollars, they ain't gonna be there for that long.
Yeah, I know, that's crazy.
By the way, that was, that, you didn't have six districts, you had five districts. What guys remember from one district?
It used to be four, it is.
Okay.
It is.
Yeah.
But that's.
Was that five districts, two members from one district?
Well, that's because their population was so big.
Two, two representatives in the Ravenna district.
Well, but it's, but I will bet, I wasn't here, that that was because their population was twice as much as the other three districts.
Well, it was.
Or the other four districts.
That was.
So, instead of dividing it to two, they just said, well, what did you say?
Two thousand and ten, that you were gonna change that by essentially shaving off pieces of what's around the lake and assigning to me the Palmyra or to, to, uh, Mr. Ken Weaver's district.
I mean, it wasn't a special thing to say, and they got two, it was because the population dictated, sure.
I'm so sorry, I have one more little starter point, so as, as Mr. Overstreet and I are forward with our plans, and we're reaching out, are we only reaching out to, to board members on the committee, or also to any other staff members completely interested in serving on them?
To be judged by staff.
If, I mean. Specifically with Mr. Sheridan and Miss Pace.
Yeah. With, they, they've said that they wanna be a part of, I'd love to at least have input.
That wasn't one on that.
I, I would suggest seeking input, though, rather than making a formal committee in there, I'm, I'm a little concerned about making sure that we've got.
Right.
Since a, a committee of the board is subject to the Freedom of Information Act, I don't wanna have everybody have to be convened at forum and all that kind of stuff. You can have as many staff members as you want, or as many members of the public, however you want to build. But I suggest that you do that in a sense that we have two members of the board being the committee, and others being resources.
Oh, so these two are the, they're the only members of the committee?
Yes, and others would be resources. And, and, and it might be good to meet in the board's room. If, you know, well, if, if the space is a lot, or you, you'd have to meet here or the board. Well.
We can wait and decide that later.
Yeah. Now, we got, we still gotta get to our close session.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much, we need to be sticky subjects. Any new business?
What about, have I made on this, um, this Chris, right, they got, did they put system, got some kind of a ward? Talking to any, I'm back old. She said they had done it, and it was done in January. She said, I'm sharing my ward with you.
She talked about the ward in, in Mrs. Booker, I apologize, I, I have a list of emails, trying to break them into that, I haven't looked at.
Email. I started, of course, I did so many emails today. I wonder sometimes whether it was old or not. Anyway, yeah, she, they got a letter.
What are we talking about?
Here's her proclamation. This was done March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. The attached proclamation and proclamation was just forwarded to me. It was done back in January, but I wanted to share it with you. And she gave us her new email address, she has a new email address, and the proclamation is attached. So. That's all.
What's the proclamation about?
The court being open.
So small, yeah, by the court being open and the base.
I think, I think this is one they probably sent to most of the counties, because I, I've tried to look through here, and I don't see Subana County mentioned specifically.
So, the January access to justice commission, a commutation for the access to the Justice Commission of the Supreme Court.
We have a pretty good court.
That works well.
Yeah, it's, it's very nice. Oh, absolutely.
Or that's the veteran note that we.
Absolutely, always proud of Miss Grace, Miss, Miss Sheridan.
I have one thing just to ask, too, this is regarding, you know, I sent the board an email, and I saw some responses, the board had asked regarding the workforce housing at Clonel Circle. Had asked, what's that?
One, Brad.
Okay, so, so that's like, I just wanna make sure I don't need to, to, to arrange in tours, if you are, if you're just gonna kinda go there and look on your own?
Yeah.
What, what's this going to demonstrate to go to, what are we?
This is the group that came and asked about putting up the workforce housing up there.
Right, right.
Um, Friday, I am going to, Mr. Winkler, close your ears. I'm going to go up to Wares Cave to see the development up there, and then I'm gonna try to come back by Charlottesville, and then we'll go around and say, I'm gonna try to grab some of the ones in Charlottesville. Just to, just to see them.
Is it the issue to Sam, or is it the issue to determine, uh, if they're gonna be somewhat subsedated? So, I think that's the issue, because you're talking about, what, fourteen hundred dollar a piece rent on each one of them? And for me, certainly, that didn't sound to me to be affordable rent.
I think this is just to go see what they, what they, what they condition, one of them is new, and one, and your child is ten years old. It's just for your information to see what.
Not necessarily to decide whether you want them or not.
No, 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 that's, yeah, really, that's, and, so the board asked before, before there was any further discussion of it, they wanted to see what some of these complexes looked like. Now, the, the group that, that presented here would, would like to come back to the board April seventh, to get some type of formal decision or determination of the board, if they wanna move forward, forward with a project like that. Um, to, to, to enter in, and, and allow a. Um, to, to, to enter in and, and allow tax incentives or factory made, or whatever you would have fallen.
I'm sure if you have a company, um, the church you talked about.
United, United Methodist.
Yeah, the United Methodist. They have staff and company.
No, they, they met with staff, um, regarding senior affordable housing that, um, across the Lake Monticello.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, and, and Mr. Miles, you had, did you have anything to update on that or is that? I think, I think we're gonna possibly have Mr. Miles maybe just do a little presentation, maybe April seventh.
Yeah, I was, we were, um, you know, we just spoke to the planning commissioner last Tuesday about senior affordable housing. Basically multifamily affordable housing of all. So the different projects that were having come through the Pony Circle one from the ten year development for its workforce housing. The Village Oaks Senior, well, that's a hundred and twenty-five units, a hundred and twenty units. And, uh, Village Oaks were the senior housing. Um, that's the United Methodist. Uh, they are, um, they also develop all around the state of Virginia. So they have, uh, and then, um, you know, we're bas, that's basically, uh, what we're trying to do with the conference as well is to provide some of this housing options. The third minor one that's kind of coming up, but, um, is also build out a Marina Point at the lake next to the Marina, the condos. That has come to the Lake Board as of last Thursday and actually residents are starting to follow me today about, um, finishing those, not as condos, but as townhouse units that are similar. So that's another ten there. So I spoke to Mr. Paul and said, hey, we have all these kind of townhouse apartment complexes coming up. Maybe we can just give a quick presentation and update you all at the board as well.
So anyway, I, I want them to know that board members are just kind of going by at their own time. So, all right, thank you.
All right. I'll now open up the second round of public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please state your name and address. Keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the board at this time? No? All righty, hearing none, I will now close the second round of public comment. Uh, do we need to make a motion or to go back into closed sessions? Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, I believe that we resume our closed session.
Yeah, I can not second that.
Okay, we got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Book of Beach, Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session.
Can I use the, I do some.
Yes, ma'am. I know, sir.
Okay, you're good to that.
Mr. Chair, I hope the closing meeting will adjourn to a kind of voice providers convening again. That's a session. You resolve voice providers as your best of each members knowledge one only father business fair lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the section two thousand thirty seven eleven A as quoted in the as amended and two only said public business standards that were identified in motion by which the closing meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered between them.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien second by Mr. Weaver. Miss Eager?
Aye.
This is Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver. Chair votes aye. We're now at a closed session. Do we have motion to withdraw?
Mr. Captain, did you have some new work?
I can do that. Do we have second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien second by Mr. Booker all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes?